Welcome to the October 24th, 2019 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission. We're calling the meeting to order now, noting that all the planning commissioners are here, and we'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda changes today?
No, we do not.
Thank you. This next period of time is an opportunity for the public to comment on any land use item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda. California law prohibits the commission from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the commission. Have five minutes per person and 15 minutes per topic. Is there anybody who would like to speak today? Would you like to speak on something not on the agenda? Okay, then we will go ahead and move on to our regular agenda, beginning with the 2018 064 Plan Development Permit for TRIDAM. And Madeline, are you in charge?
I am.
Lead us on.
All right. Good morning. This is project number 2018-064, Plan Development Permit for TRIDAM. The project is located on APN 064-029-062, which is located at 7430 Oberhorns Ferry Road in Copperopolis. The project description, the applicant is requesting approval to develop a day-use recreational facility to provide public access to Tulak Reservoir. The day-use facility will include picnic areas, fishing pier, launch for non-motorized boats, restrooms, and parking lot. There is currently limited public access to Tulak Reservoir in Calaveras County, and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has issued an order to TRIDAM authorizing the development of a public-access day-use recreation site. The proposed day-use facility will be operated by TRIDAM and will include a security system, an electronic access gate, and locking restrooms to ensure security and inaccessibility from dusk until dawn. This is the 2018 county aerial photo. The parcel is currently undeveloped. There is a rock retaining wall, dirt lot, and some trees planted near the reservoir's edge. The site was previously used for dock repairs, as you can see in the image here. Development along this area of the shoreline consists of vacation rentals in the adjacent north, adjacent parcels to the north and south, and the Lakes Treatment Center, which is a drug and alcohol rehab facility, formerly the Lake Tulak Resort, which can be seen in the lower left corner of the image. This is the 2016 Google Earth image, which I wanted to include to give you a better sense of the site, with the existing encroachment, the rock retaining wall, and the trees. The parcel is 5.25 acres in size, with approximately 1.5 acres being above the ordinary high-water mark, depending on the reservoir level. Here is the site plan, which was included in the application, which I'm going to zoom in on a little bit, which hopefully will help you to read it, to show the improved encroachment and gate, the 20-by-30 office structure, two-unit restroom, the dirt area above the retaining wall, which will be improved with five picnic tables amongst the existing trees, the parking lot with 16 new paved parking spaces, as well as ADA parking, will be constructed, which is shown in gray, and a 53-foot fishing pier and launch for non-motorized watercraft. Tulak Reservoir is an impalement of the Stanislaus River, which has been established by the Army Corps of Engineers as a jurisdictional water body. The jurisdictional limit is the ordinary high-water mark, which is 510 feet above mean sea level. The majority of the project construction will be above the ordinary high-water mark, with the exception of the boat launch and the fishing pier, which will be fabricated on land and installed with the support of steel-driven pilings as the piers. Construction of the boat launch and pier will be required to meet all the regulatory provisions of the Army Corps and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. This is the Google Street View image looking south at the existing encroachment onto Oberhorns Ferry Road. This is the view of looking southwest of the proposed parking area and the proposed picnic area, showing the existing retaining wall. And there is the proposed location of the boat launch and office building. The Plan Development Combining Zone allows for the review of commercial development plans to encourage design innovation and provide a more detailed county project review than would otherwise normally be allowed in the base zone, to improve the visual quality of a project and provide more efficient land use, to provide more open space, protect fragile natural resources, and to develop public services at minimal cost. The project as conditioned meets all the performance standards of the PD Combining Zone as defined in Section 17.O50.060. The plan, excuse me, the landscaping requirement of 10% of the total disturbed area shall be met, as shown in the landscaping plan. The total proposed disturbed area is 23,000 square feet, and the proposed landscaping is over 6,000 square feet, which exceeds the requirement. The structures will be tan in color with brown roofs to enhance the reservoir environment and blend with the surrounding structures. Parking will be screened by boulders, which will be placed along the right-of-way in order to deter parking along Oberhorns Ferry Road. Adjacent parcels are zoned A1 and C2, and therefore a visual screening along the side parcel boundaries is not required, and there will be no rooftop equipment proposed that would require any screening. An onsite entrance sign has been designed to meet the standards of Chapter 1772, and the project has been conditioned to meet the access and vehicle parking requirements of 1770-030 for the 90-degree parking, which is shown in Figure 1 of said section. The day-use facility will also have a packet-in, packet-out policy. Dumpsters will be prohibited, however, there will be small trash receptacles permitted in the picnic area. Consistency with the general plan, Calaveras County General Plan Policy 2-22A recognizes legally existing uses, parcels, and zoning which do not conform to current standards, but which were legally established under the regulations in effect at the time they were first commenced or created. Implementation Measure 2-22A-3 states that any commercial, industrial, or multifamily zoning legally existing within areas which, under the current general plan, would not be permitted, shall be considered consistent zoning within the designation. The subject parcel, APN 064-029-062, was rezoned by a previous landowner from A1-X to C2PD in 1979, which predates the general plan. Therefore, the legally existing nonconforming commercial zoning is considered consistent with the general plan. Also, General Plan Policy 2-22D requires the review of proposed expansion or development of legally existing nonconforming uses for traffic impacts. When legally existing nonconforming uses expand, or an undeveloped parcel with legally existing nonconforming zoning is to be developed. Implementation Measure 2-22D-1 requires project-specific improvements meeting the provisions of the circulation element and the county road ordinance, Chapter 12.02 of the county code. The Public Works Department has included conditions of approval, requiring that the project meet all the provisions of the road ordinance and Chapter 12.02. In addition, General Plan Policy 2-20A allows for location-specific recreation-oriented commercial uses outside of community, special, and specific plan areas and community centers. The subject property has a current land use designation of future single-family residential with a five-acre minimum, and a proposed land use designation of commercial, and is therefore not within a community, special, specific plan area, or community center. The proposed recreational development is tied to a specific recreation resource, Tulak Reservoir, and the location is one of the few sites on the shoreline that can accommodate public access to support the use of the resource. Six comment letters were received from local agencies, which included standard requirements and no objections to the project. In addition, three comment letters were received from adjacent landowners with concerns regarding traffic, water safety, fire hazards, inadequate parking, and negative impacts to neighboring parcels from after-hours trespassers. Adjoining property owners are primarily concerned with an increase to the heavy traffic along this stretch of Oberhorns Ferry Road, as well as increased watercraft affecting the navigability of that area of the water. The impacts from use at the recreational facility will be minimal due to its small size and limited parking, with only 16 parking spaces available and parking prohibited along the right-of-way. In addition, the boat launch is for non-motorized boats only. With concerns regarding traffic, I wanted to include this image to show you the stretch of Oberhorns Ferry Road at the site. It's straight directly adjacent to the parcel. Westbound vehicles driving from Tuolumne County across the bridge are required to slow to 25 miles per hour in the turn directly after the bridge, which is just to the north of the parcel, and vehicles driving in the eastbound lane also must navigate a 20 mile per hour turn just southwest of the parcel. The line of sight from the existing encroachment was determined to be very clear for several hundred feet in both directions during staff site visit. As Oberhorns Ferry Road is a major transportation corridor, the project will not significantly contribute to traffic volumes. The project application was reviewed by the Public Works Department with no concerns regarding traffic or line of sight. In addition, Public Works requires that the applicant pay its fair share costs as part of the Copperopolis benefit basin and road impact mitigation fees. Concerns regarding fire hazards included the use of portable barbecues. A response to the application routing was received from the Copperopolis Fire District with no objections to the project. A comment letter was submitted by the owner of 7540 Oberhorns Ferry Road, which is APN 064. I have my parcel numbers in here. I can show you the aerial going back. It is the parcel in the very north, 064, 029, 016, and 017. Mr. Scott Frazier is one of the property owners there, who was objecting to the day-use facility due to the presence of an access easement that is described in his deed. The deed for these two parcels, Mr. Frazier's property describes an access easement for a 15-foot wide strip of land lying adjacent and easterly of the right-of-way of Oberhorns Ferry Road. A licensed surveyor with Dillon and Murphy, Mr. Joe Murphy, the engineer, reviewed the deed from Mr. Frazier, as well as the deed for the subject property, and Mr. Frazier determined that the access easement does not cross the subject property, APN 064-029-062. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, county staff prepared an initial study and negative declaration that analyzed the environmental impacts. The negative declaration was distributed for a 30-day review and comment period from March 18th, 2019 through April 18th, 2019. The circulation of the document did not result in agency concerns and revealed no environmental effects. So to conclude, the proposed project includes a day-use recreational facility to provide public access to Tulak Reservoir. The day-use recreational facility as conditioned satisfies the requirements of County Code Section 17.50.060, which are the performance standards for the Plan Development Combining Zone. The proposed project has been designed to be consistent with the surrounding area and is also consistent with the applicable policies of the general plan and Calaveras County Zoning Code Title 17. There were no agency concerns, and although there have been concerns received from neighboring landowners, the proposed use is permitted by right in the C2 zone. The application for the Plan Development Permit as conditioned will meet all of the standards of the Plan Development Combining Zone. And that's it. And the applicant is here if you have questions?
Yes, I do. The staff report says, and I think you said, that FERC issued an order authorizing the development of a public-access day-use recreation site. Did FERC just authorize one, or did it require one?
I believe that might be a good question for Susan Larson to answer. She has all the details. Hi.
Members of the commission? This is kind of comforting for me personally, and a bit of a deja vu. I was planning director and LFO executive officer for Trinity County from 1979 to 1984, and in that capacity, on a few occasions, I had privilege of coming to San Andreas and working with your Public Utilities Department, because we share something in common with Calaveras County, have a unique Western Area Power Administration first preference right. There's only two in the country, and Trinity and Calaveras hold those. So it's great to be back. It's been a few years, and I'm glad to be here. We do support the staff recommendation and appreciate the work that they've done in responding to the concerns raised by the community. FERC, to answer your question, FERC did require a day-use area as a part of our license requirement, and in fact, in November of 2018, they did approve this specific site for that compliance. I should back up and put my name on the record.
Thank you.
Being an old planning director, I remember how important those things are. I apologize. My name is Jeff Shields, and I'm the interim general manager for the TRIDAM project and TRIDAM Power Authority. We are located at 31885 Old Strawberry Road in Strawberry, California. Again, my apologies for jumping ahead of that. This site was previously used, as staff referenced, in fact, for a day-use area, and TRIDAM project in 2003 authorized Merle and Beverly Holman issued an encroachment permit specifically for the installation and operation of a commercial public-access area, which will include a park and marina facility. So this is a longstanding consideration for this particular property. What I think I'd like to do at this point, we do have staff here, as well as council, and Mr. Murphy, who's the surveyor, licensed surveyor, that addressed one of the issues that your staff just referenced.
Could you just wait a moment? Go ahead and sit down and see if there's any other member of the commission who'd like to ask questions of our staff, and then we'll give you an opportunity to come up with your recommendations.
I'm not going anywhere until we're done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. On the easement issue that's been raised by Mr. Frazier, his property adjoins this parcel to the east, right?
Yes.
And the Dillon-Murphy letter says the easement is for a 15-foot wide strip east of the easterly right-of-way line of Oberhorns Ferry Road. And it says it passes through Parcel 1, the land described in Book 429 of official records. And where is that parcel? Because I'm having trouble figuring out where this easement is, if it's not on the TRIDAM property.
Yes, understood. That is exactly why I asked Susan Larson to hire a surveyor to explain all of this, because the description was rather confusing, because easements went way back, and there were exchanges of property, and Mr. Murphy is here, and he can clarify exactly what his findings were when he reviewed those descriptions.
Good morning. My name's Joe Murphy with Dillon and Murphy, PO Box 2180 in Lodi. The parcel referenced in that deed says the northerly 15 feet of Parcel 1. Parcel 1, as described in that deed, is two parcels west or southwest of the TRIDAM parcel. So I'm not sure why that access easement is included, but it's two parcels away from the TRIDAM parcel. There is no access easement described on the TRIDAM parcel itself, and the reason it's still in, I can't answer to, but I know it doesn't affect the TRIDAM parcel. And looking at that picture, I'm not sure what good an access through TRIDAM would do to the parcel to the north. It seemed like you'd have to cross water to get to the home, so that's neither here nor there. But to answer your question, that 15-foot strip adjacent to Oberhorns Ferry is southwest of the TRIDAM parcel.
So it's the opposite direction from TRIDAM parcel for Mr. Frazier's property?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
The zoning on this parcel is C2, correct?
Yes.
And the staff report points out that this proposed day-use facility is permitted by right in the C2 zone. Is any boundary, to your knowledge, disputed that particular point? So while a Plan Development Permit's required here, and that's why this project is before the commission, there's no issue here whether this project use is appropriate for this parcel, putting aside any SEQA issues?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
So the questions are really, is this project consistent with the purposes of the PD Combining Zone? Is it consistent with the general plan? And does the environmental document comply with SEQA?
Yes.
And that's pretty much it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll have more as we go along, but that's enough for starters.
I don't get into a specific. Is the bathroom plumbed? Is this going to be a chemical bathroom, or is this going to be flowing water?
There's a C.
Nice to have answers available.
Good morning. I'm Susan Larson, license compliance for TRIDAM project, and the restroom is going to be very much like that you'd find in your home. It's going to be connected to district water and district sewer. It's not going to be a campground-like composting restroom, and that was specifically a part of our plan from the onset, so that it would be compatible with adjacent property owners and not be a blight.
Now, why is it directly adjacent to the home that's next door?
Because that is where the connection for the water and sewer facilities are stubbed out at present, and also the thought was that if we placed it here, you know, one of the concerns that has been raised is trespass, unauthorized use. Tucking it there, given that it'll be very much like a restroom in your home, will be less likely for people to be driving by, pull over, and try to use it off hours and that sort of thing. So it wasn't intended to burden anyone. It was intended to make sure that it's available for users of the park and does not become an attractive nuisance. I will just add to that, that I've had several conversations with the Sheriff's Department, who has, you know, said that they've given us some pointers about some parks that they've recently developed and using ivy around them to shield them, to prevent graffiti, and also Captain Macedo was telling me about a new blue light concept. So we're going to be using all of those facilities to make sure that our day-use area is compatible with the neighbors and not a detractor at all. So.
How can the neighbor be reassured that this is going to be kept up as if it were in a family bathroom? In other words, no odors starting to emanate, the sounds of flushing toilets won't be heard next door? What, you know, what? How can that neighbor be reassured?
Well, we, one of the things that's important to realize when an agency like TRIDAM that operates a facility under a license issued by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, one of the things that we do, we will have to do, like we do with our powerhouses, our spillways, our gates, all of those things, we will have to submit to FERC an ongoing maintenance and operation plan. We will be securing it by a gate, an attractive fencing system and gate. We want people to know that an agency like TRIDAM that provides great pride in all of our powerhouses as being state-of-the-art, also this recreation facility does the very same thing. So if there are ever any concerns that Mr. Payne would have, we would want him to call us immediately. But we expect to have the facility maintained on a weekly basis. So whether we're there daily, we'll be there daily if needed. We're all around that region. We operate the Tulak, you know, the facilities, the dam and power facilities at Tulak, a mere by boat, 10 minutes. So we will be making sure that we're there every day and/or weekly if need be.
And assuming all of a sudden TRIDAM undergoes a terrible transformation and becomes irresponsible, and you're no longer with them, who's the enforcement officer or agency that would respond to complaints at that location?
Well, the ultimate agency.
I know, I've posed it.
No, 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 no.
Something that could never happen.
Totally good question, though. No, good question. The ultimate agency that TRIDAM is responsible is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. While they may be in Washington, D.C., they have a local office in San Francisco. I will tell you that all of the Wash, well, four of the Washington, D.C. folks were here in September for a national conference that TRIDAM hosted, and we were selected to host, and they've seen the site in person. They, we are ultimately TRIDAM, whether I'm here, whether the interim general manager, you know, he will be replaced by a permanent general manager, we're responsible to FERC for making sure that this facility is properly operated and maintained.
Are there any, is there any office of that agency that's closer than San Francisco?
No. I mean, not.
Let me speak to this question. I appreciate the question. First of all, TRIDAM has an incredible balance sheet, so they're not going to go anywhere for a long time, but should they?
Yes.
They are owned by the Oakdale Irrigation District and the South San Joaquin Irrigation District. Those two enterprises were formed in 1909, and subsequently in the '50s, built the TRIDAM project. But they still own, and there's no debt on that project whatsoever, nor does South San Joaquin or Oakdale currently have debt on their balance sheet. These are very healthy agencies that date back to 1909. They have a strong interest in Tuolumne and Calaveras Counties, as well as in San Joaquin and Stanislaus Counties. I wouldn't look for any of them to go anywhere very soon.
Yes, I was getting to that, but thank you for answering that. Any additional questions for me?
No, I will have, I mean, I'm not sure. I'm not sure where you're compartmentalizing.
Yes.
I'd like to also rerespond to the last question of Commissioner Ladish. You know, this is a county permit, and violations of the terms of the permit would also be subject to county enforcement, so our code enforcement team, if there was, you know, they didn't mean to.
So our code enforcement team, if there was, you know, if they didn't maintain the property appropriately, the county code enforcement team could go out there and...
And that's somewhat discretionary enforcement insofar as odors, things like that? It's not just raw sewage flowing on the ground?
Well, it'd be violations of the terms of the use of the planned development permit and the other county codes.
Okay. Because I noticed that the negative declaration had nothing about odors, and so I assume that means that the county assumes there will be no odors.
Well, again, this is a fully plumbed facility. It's not an outhouse or a vault toilet, so that, you know, unless there is a, you know, failure of the plumbing system, the chance of odors is very likely.
Thank you. Somebody can explain to me what the... Just a second. The wetland enhancement area, what that is, and why it might have any sort of effect on neighbors?
Susan, do you want to discuss that a little bit?
I can explain that again. It is certainly not a mandatory component of the project. There's no requirement even by FERC or anything. It's just that, back in about 1996, folks at Tealook, where a complaint was filed with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, that people at Tealook, some of them had placed fill into the waters of the United States, and that that was a violation, meaning high water is at 510, and that it also establishes the limits of the Corps jurisdiction. So the Corps came in and wrote, I believe it was 50 or 60 letters, to people at Tealook. And long story short is, the Corps agreed to accept some of the fill, but folks were required to pay into an after-the-fact mitigation fund that was paid to Trident spin the holder of that money. And the goal is to establish a wetlands protection, you know, somewhere on the reservoir. And it was really Trident thought that that might be a great place back in that cove. It's not a part of where active recreation will occur, and there is a fair amount of wetlands vegetation that should be protected. So it's just a part of our project to use that money that folks at Tealook did pay to, you know, maybe increase habitat in that area by planting. We'll be hiring, actually, a wildlife biologist to prepare that plan, so.
Thank you. Just in case this might involve you, the term "car top" in boats is used several times. Does that mean that boats on trailers can't be launched? Or is it a...
What car top launch means is for stand-up paddleboards, kayaks, canoes, not for powerboats. It's not that type of launch.
Boats that can, could go on car tops, but don't have to be on car tops.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just kind of a recreation, kind of trendy term used these days, but...
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question about the wetland restoration in the cove? I think there might be some concern that you could be creating an obligation on the part of an adjacent landowner if the wetland materials, the plantings, expanded into that area, that somehow that would be protected and would limit their ability to use that.
Thank you for that question. No, a very, very good question. It's going to be part of our yearly, well, probably yearly evaluation, but perhaps bi-yearly. We're going to want to see that it succeeds in, you know, providing increased habitat for fish, birds, and other, you know, species within the areas. But we'll also be making sure that it doesn't expand beyond the limits of our property and burden other properties. But, you know, you may or may not know that, you know, one of the things our FERC license did was require Trident to place Osprey platforms around the reservoir. We have kind of a significant... We have western pawturtled at Tealook, so Trident has been required to place turtle basking stations. So there are a fair number of species around the reservoir that Trident actively oblig... you know, is obligated to monitor. We have a wildlife biologist that actually goes out once a year and monitors these facilities. So it would be the same sort of monitoring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last question for the staff. Has the Sheriff's Office been consulted by the staff? One of the letters said that the Sheriff's Office had not been consulted.
They did not receive the initial routing of this application, but I did speak to Under Sheriff Macedo about the project, and he did not have any concerns. And he told me he'd been speaking to the applicant, and they were tossing around ideas about security.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Madeline before we give the applicant an opportunity to speak?
Oh, we'll see setback on the structures from the adjacent properties. And then fence was mentioned. What type of fence would be used to separate the properties?
The setback? You're primarily discussing the south...
The restroom.
Right, so both parcels are Zone C2, so there is a zero setback on that side. And with regards to the fencing, I believe Susan can tell a little bit more about the design for the fencing.
While she's coming up. Is there any setback provided? I mean, it's not required, but...
I do not see a measurement on this site plan. I see the property line is defined and the location of the building, but the distance from the property line to the restroom structure, I'm not seeing on this site plan.
It is not at zero. I think it's shown at five or more, and there is room to adjust it out a little further, even though not required. And as I said earlier, speaking with Under Sheriff Macedo, he talked about that they've had great success installing IV around them. And so that's something that we'll look at, too, which will screen it better. It'll make it more attractive to look at from adjacent properties as well.
I think that a good neighbor aspect would be to have a little separation.
Absolutely. Yeah, even the house next door is close, and I think it might be right at or, you know, just several feet. And we understand that, and Trident wants to be a very good neighbor. You know, I think that it's a vacation rental at present, and I think those folks often wander over and onto the property. So hopefully, as it's developed and even nicer, it'll hopefully be a benefit. It's our goal. But in terms of your specific question about fencing, one of the things that Trident does, we actually looked at two other sites to develop a public day-use site. And one of the things we will do is we will come up with a couple of concepts and go to the neighbors and say, what do you think about fencing? Do you like this? One of our thoughts, we want it to be sort of upscale and attractive, so our thought originally was to come up with some type of metal fencing with an attractive entry gate as well. But what we typically do is we have our design team poised, assuming we get a project approval soon, to come up with that design, and we'll go to the neighbors and say, what do you think about this fencing? But the thought right now is metal with a metal gate system entrance.
So what type of metal is it? You think in chain link?
No, metal, meaning...
Do you mean wrought iron?
Yeah, wrought iron or some type of powder-coated material is what I mean, not chain link.
Well, you're saying metal.
Yeah, metal, attractive metal, you know.
And a fence is required between a commercial use and a residential use, right? And so this residence is on a C2-zoned parcel, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
But there is a pre-existing residence there, so I would think that the fence would be a requirement.
It is a requirement for Trident as far as we are concerned, because we are responsible for this property, you know, just like we are for our dams and spillways and powerhouses. So we don't want people that come there to use the park to wander off and trespass onto adjacent properties as well, nor do we want people coming in at 2:00 in the morning. So we're going to be looking at a fence that's attractive, not chain link, but that hopefully serves as a detractor.
A deterrent.
Yeah, no, no, no. No, no, no. No, no, no.
And Chair, just to clarify a little bit, the code states specifically for an adjacent parcel zoning, not use. So if it was our one single-family residential, and there was a residence there, it would require screening.
So given this is PD, and this is exactly why we're reviewing it, it seems like making sure that the fence is a component of the requirements would be a prudent thing, not that we don't believe that you're going to do it.
It's not something that we would oppose, because we intend to do that along the side and along the frontage as well.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for Madeline before we make Susan jump back up again?
It's fine.
No questions.
Would the applicant like to make a statement about the project?
I believe everything's been stated. If we've answered any questions, obviously, we'll stick around and be in a position to respond to anything that you might want to ask further before...
I think the question of the setback of the restroom will probably be coming up, so you might be considering what you would be willing to.
Well, hey, tell us what you want. That's not really a significant issue for us. You know, we don't need to be on the property line. So if you want 5 feet, you want 10 feet, yeah. We need to be over there because...
Because that's sort of plumbing.
As you can see this, it starts encroaching on the number of parking spaces that we have as well. So the further we go, the fewer parking spaces that can be accommodated. But, you know, as Susan mentioned, our intention is to be a good neighbor, and we've got a pretty good track record on the attractiveness of our facilities, and, you know, are willing to make the investments necessary to meet the county's needs. No problem there.
I do have one more question. What's the office building going to be used for if the maintenance is going to be done once a week from the dam side of things?
Right. So right now, our regulatory affairs activities are conducted out of Susan's personal residence at the lake. We don't have a office on Lake Tealook, and it's a, you know, a large amount of our daily business is conducted. And we'd like to be in that area with an office so that people that need dock permits and such don't have to go all the way, you know, around the lake over to South Shore or to come up to Strawberry. And we'd also like to not be using Susan's home. So for a variety of reasons, we'd like to put an office space in there, but that doubles also as a good security. And so if we have, you know, staff there on a regular basis or even permanent basis daily, it'll just make it a lot nicer. In terms of maintenance, our objective is to bid that out to a landscape maintenance enterprise and have it maintained regularly, you know, daily, weekly, but regularly.
So how many...
I just wanted to add to that, that we've also had some very initial discussions about possibly it being used to provide a storage space for the county sheriff's marine safety boat. So there are a number of, whether we use it for an office or whether we provide it for, you know, sheriff's security, you know, there's already talk about possibly, you know, putting the emblem of the county sheriff there as a deterrent as well. So it might be a couple of different, you know, things we can use it for.
So when you're using this office space, how many people are you estimating to be in there on a daily basis? One person, so.
Maybe two.
Parking's not going to be an issue?
No.
Taking spots?
And it is limited for parking, so it may not be office space. It may be security for the sheriff's department, storage of their boat. They have else... They have other places where they keep it now, but it's another option for them.
So will there be plumbed toilets inside the office building?
Possibly, yes. It hasn't been designed yet, because until we have the county's approval of our planned development permit, we have not gone to design or engineering of the project. Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant?
Not at this time.
So this would be the opportunity for the public to comment, and five minutes per speaker. Is there anybody who'd like to get started? Thank you.
I will be the guinea pig. Good morning, Chairperson Plotnick and Commissioners. My name is Bernadette Catania, and I am the current owner of the Lake Treatment Center and the property owners of several parcels that are close. Based on the application and subsequent staff report recommending approval, it appears that Trident has misrepresented crucial facts to the planning department. First and foremost in my review is the fact that Trident appears to have drafted the site plans that include restroom facilities and an office in-house without any licensed engineer. Secondly, there is no topography that can be proven accurate nor stamped by a licensed surveyor. There are a multitude of misrepresentations on the site plan. Beach areas that are submerged underwater from April through September. An office that isn't mentioned in the project's description originally and hangs off the edge of an already eroding shoreline. A picnic area that is built on fill and is in a flood zone. A retaining wall that needs to be built to get to the car top launch, which was not mentioned, with no way to get a car to the actual launch to get your things that are on the top of the car to the launch. In short, you have just over a half acre, if they went back to the aerial picture, that was taken when the water was down an extra 25 feet. That picture was taken, I don't know where they found it, but probably maybe 2015 or before, when the water was down an additional 25 feet for maintenance on the spillway. So in short, I believe that the one and a half acres that staff mentioned is above water is inaccurate. You have just over a half acre of usable land, and you're trying to put 16 parking spots, two of which are extra wide for handicapped, five picnic areas, a couple of bathrooms, and an office building. It just doesn't fit. Not only doesn't it fit, but it's grossly unsafe, both off the busy connector, Oberon's Ferry Road, but also from the water. There is no recent traffic study. The speed limit in front of the proposed project is 55 miles an hour, not 20 to 25 as indicated by staff. As for comments regarding the safety issues surrounding the recreation activities that will occur here, it truly is not a safe site. You don't know this, because neither Calaveras County nor Toowomee County marine divisions, who both patrol the water portion of the lake, were not given an opportunity to comment because they were not included in the initial routing. All activities that occur here should be in a quiet cove or an already existing 5-mile-per-hour zone. We do not need to create additional 5-mile-per-hour zones on Lake Tealook. There is so much history on this proposed project dating back nearly two decades. It comes to you as a requirement for Trident to provide additional public access on Calaveras side of the reservoir, as recommended in a Splat report, I think from like 2002, which is the Stanislaus Planning Action Team dedicated to issues surrounding the Stanislaus River. That decades-old report indicated a need, based on misrepresentations at the time, that our resort at Lake Tealook was a public launch ramp and a public access, which it is not. It has always been private. This proposed project is a disaster and is in a wholly inappropriate location. I believe it to be inconsistent with the general plan and the existing uses in the immediate neighborhood. Our location is at the far end of the county, in fact, less than a quarter mile from the county line. Law enforcement is already burdened, and sometimes we wait over an hour for a sheriff to arrive. We have had at least five vehicles come off Oberon's Ferry Road and land in our parking lot, three of them on our propane tank, the last one about six months ago, forcing an evacuation of our entire facility. Again, this is the wrong location for this project, and specifically will endanger the public and have... public and have the opposite effect of its purpose. I have created a document for you to review prior to voting and would like this document to be added to the record. And a couple of comments, I have 30 seconds. An order by FERC is not an order for the county. It doesn't meet performance standards. There is no trash, I believe, no trash collection area. Prudent planning doesn't put a park next to a busy road. There are several more appropriate parcels in Black Creek, and Mr. Shields said they have an incredible balance sheet. Maybe they should buy a larger parcel that's more appropriate. Thank you.
And there is enough. You each of the.
So I have a question. We received a letter from the Par Law Group that says it's representing the resort at Lake Tullock. I assume that's, that doesn't mean that he's representing you.
We lease the property currently, but I am the president of the resort at Lake Tullock. Mr. Giambi, who's the main person that had this, he passed away about six months ago, so I'm pretty much it for representation. So yes, that letter is basically from us.
So it, in its first paragraph, says the resort's parcels are directly adjacent to the proposed TRIDAM project. Is that true?
No, they're within a few hundred feet.
You might tell your representative to not start off with a false statement that gets us on the wrong step.
I apologize for that.
So the applicant is required to provide public access, correct?
That Splat report, yeah. They are required to, I guess, have this public access. I'm just saying it's the wrong area.
But the current, I don't know how we get around the current county, get around the current county zoning that would permit this use on this space and that we can just adjust things, but we really can't deny this use for that space. Do you have any suggestions on that score?
Well, I do believe that you have the right to deny the project. There are misrepresentations that what they have proposed does not fit on the lot, and there's no engineering for you to refer to. If you, there's going to be some more testimony, and you'll have some pictures to look at, but it doesn't fit. It's not engineered. I've never seen a project that, an application that was deemed complete that didn't have dimensions, there's no complete dimensions for you to look at to see if it fits. I asked for an overlay, and I asked, I was told by Madeline that there was, she didn't need an overlay because there was an engineered site, and it's not engineered. There's no engineering on it.
So what you're claiming is, is that, okay, maybe, maybe this, this use of this property is something that we can't, we can't change, but that the presentation to the commission is inadequate?
It is, I think that there are misrepresentations.
And I would point out that bringing us all this on the day that we are considering it is not very effective, and it's inconsistent with the procedures of this planning commission. We're supposed to have this by, I think it's Tuesday.
They can provide it.
We can provide it.
They can provide it. Well, my suggestion is if you're expecting us to read all this before we vote on it, that's unrealistic.
I believe that that's our right to bring to you.
Well, thank you for presenting it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Craig Robinson. I'm boyfriend of Bernadette, owner of the Lakes Treatment Center. Sorry for the burden of bringing all this to you, but we don't have a lot of time to deal with these situations. And the TRIDAM project is very misleading. They are misrepresenting a lot of the project where Bernadette says, just the elevations alone. We know for a fact that the wall is about two to three inches under the water on a normal high water flow. They claim that it's at the 513, which can't possibly happen. So therefore, we know that it hasn't been engineered. There's no topographical picture that shows the correct elevations or what have you. I've got a bunch more information for you guys to read, which you don't want to hear. It basically talks about the erroneous scale. There is no real accurate scale on their drawings. There is no, the beach area is impossible during the high water level. There is no beach. When the water's down, it's just rocks. There is a big bank there. The dimensions for everything is just very inadequate. I feel so bad for Mr. Payne for them putting a bathroom right next to his house. I don't know what the setbacks are or how far away it is from his house, but it's a bathroom with feet away from his house. The launch ramp, I don't know how that is supposed to work. It's a big eight to 10-foot bank right now. It's a wall. I don't know how you're to access the water, to and from the water. I do realize a day-use park is needed. This area, us having a drug and alcohol recovery center real close by, how are we to police the people from coming onto our docks, using our launch ramp, trying to fight with the people on our facilities because we just know it's going to happen? And I don't know how you're going to police that and keep people off our property. If it was a resort, it'd be one thing, but we are a drug and alcohol recovery center. We can't allow anybody on our property. And it's very disturbing to understand how we are going to deal with this. There's no kind of enforcement. We don't know how this is going to be affected. How do the police deal with it? What kind of issues are going to arise from this? Alcohol, is it allowed? If there's no guard or anybody at the gate to inspect people or to see what's going on, policing of the place is going to be tough. The trash, everything about it is just, to us, it's scary. We don't know what to do about it. I don't believe there was an impact study, environmental impact study or the traffic. They say that it's all within reason, but like Bernadette said, we have cars crash over the hill into our parking lot, and people speed through there daily. We get like 4,000 cars go by that road every day, and it's amazing. The camping, there's not going to be any overnight camping, TRIDAM says. At the same time, there's going to be a steel fence. Is it two foot high, four foot high, eight foot tall? We don't know. We would like to have a little more detail on everything from the office building. Where is it really going to sit? How big is it really? The elevations, you know, just to have a little bit more detailed plan on exactly what is going to happen because it's just very misleading and it's hard to understand what is really going to happen here. I think it might be, the parking lot might be used more for transit people. I don't know. It's just, day use is one thing, but is reality, I don't really know. And so just a little worried about all that.
I have a couple of questions. Currently, the property is there with no gate, no fence? Is that correct?
They're correct. There's a wall, there's a couple pieces of pipe with a rope or chain across there to discourage people from coming onto the property.
So right now, then, the, keeping people safe from camping on the property is, should be just as problematic now as it would be when there is a full gate across the access?
There is, as you can see in the picture, there is a gate, but not really a gate. It's a chain, it's fenced off and signed, and nobody really goes onto the property.
Nobody goes on the property now?
No, I can't say that because there, people park on the road. They will go down there and they will leave their trash, beer bottles and beer cans and what have you.
I just don't see why the situation would be worse when you have an agency there that's trying to control the trash and police the property than it is now. And I don't understand why you're anticipating all the trespasses on your property down the road from, from being caused by this property. It just does not sound reasonable.
The way I see it, just past the bridge where the people used to park and migrate down the shoreline and jump off the rock and what have you, there has been some fences and rocks set up to keep people from parking over there. I don't know if you know the area that I'm talking about. If you go east from the project, right as you cross the bridge, there's an area where people used to park and walk down and picnic and what have you on the side of the lake. There's a lot of trash, a lot of graffiti, glass, everything, and so they fenced that off to stop people from going there. So now those people, they're going to be moving into this new area because it's set up for them. That's what we're fearful of because the people that used to go there, they vandalize everything by leaving trash, graffiti, painting on all the rocks and what have you, and that's what we're afraid of. I understand your question. The place has been occupied pretty much by Merle for a lot of years. He ran his business out of there. It's just become vacant just recently after his passing and TRIDAM bought the property.
My name's Craig Whitty. I'm a retired lieutenant from the California Highway Patrol. I live in Angels Camp, but I also work part-time helping Bernadette's residents with their legal issues. And I drive in and out of that area on a regular basis now. And driving in and out of the Lakes Treatment Center is risky business, making turns in and out, and we're only 400 feet from the location that's being proposed. I'm not, I'm not against doing this right, but I think you need to look at traffic safety. Just up the road, Tullock Shores, you're putting some turn, they're putting some turn lanes in there. You've got car counts, you've got speed counts for that location. I think you can deduct that this is a similar line of sight to that one, that we probably need to look at this. Let me, first, let me address the parking area. It says rooftop boat, but now that's a term, not a reality. There could be trailers. The way this parking lot is set up with 90 degrees and only one way in and one way out, I'm not sure how a car with a trailer is going to safely park in there. So I think that design, there's a flaw to it if you're going to allow trailers in there. The longer you make that parking lot or to make a turnaround, the closer that bathroom's going to have to stay to the private residence. Secondly, that office building, the 20 by 30 building, there's a significant grade there and then a cliff. So either that building's going to have to be brought up closer to the road or pilings or some kind of reinforcement is going to have to be done to put that building on this piece of parcel that they're discussing. If you move it towards the road, now we're interfering with line of sight leaving that area. So let's get to the line of sight. I'd like to address an area I feel should be real concern for the board when reviewing this proposal, traffic safety. In reviewing this proposal, I do not see an engineering survey, a car count, a speed survey of any kind. There's no attachment such as a report from the Highway Patrol including accident pictures for this location, a report from the Department of County Roads indicating any kind of proposed turn lanes or proposed shoulder paving to allow for vehicles, a safe location to exit the roadway while entering and leaving this day-use area. At this location, Oberon's Ferry is 55 miles an hour. There's no regulatory signs requiring anyone to drive less than 55 miles an hour at this location as implied in the proposal. There's an advisory sign to reduce speed for curves in the roadway north and south of this location. However, none of these signs are visible from the proposed day-use area. Vehicles traveling at 55 miles an hour are traveling at approximately 80 feet per second. The line of sight to the north heading towards Copperopolis or the Lakes Treatment Center is approximately 360 feet. And the line of sight heading towards Jamestown is 570 feet without that building, without office building in there. If we, in my profession, we use three-quarters of second perception and three-quarters of second reaction time and then braking distance to figure out how long it took to stop. It would, a safe stopping distance is about 300 feet. So if you back up three or four cars making the right turn in there, coming down from our property, we're 60 feet back, that's about the limit of where somebody comes around that corner, sees, reacts, and brakes and stops. We're going to have a lot of accidents there. In my short-term working with Bernadette, I've seen two cars go over the edge into our parking lot. We just had a lumber truck spill load over onto the bridge a week or so ago. I'm not saying this is that you need to prohibit this from happening. I say you just need to do it safely, and I think you need to require a left turn pocket and a right turn pocket in order to do it safely. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Thank you.
I wasn't aware that I was supposed to be your presentation. But I'm going to hand it out to you just because I'm not familiar with how these things I was going to skip directly off these, but I think I'm just going to have a little bit of this. This is a construction, you see it all. My name is John Pang. I'm the owner, one of the owners, my brother and I, my sister own the home that's adjacent. And it was purchased in 1976 by my parents who had a bugging business in Modesto, moved up there in 1979, had it used on as commercial. up there in 1979, had it used on as commercial and, uh, ran a boat business running boats out then and repairing boats for about 10 years. I see two issues here when I, when I look at the project and that. One of them was public safety from a public safety standpoint, and the other was how it was going to affect me and my home, which is right next door. Uh, the road traffic over the last 40, I think I mentioned it's been coming up there for the last 40 years, and the road traffic has only increased since then. Uh, there are thousands of vehicles that are, that are on that road every day, uh, and they're not traveling at 25 miles an hour. They're going a lot faster than that. And, um, the traffic will stop. I will end up with anywhere from 10 to 25 vehicles on any given day stopping by. It's one access for people. They want to take pictures of the lake. It's a great location for taking pictures of Table Mountain, for taking, uh, walking down to the water. And so they end up access, pulling into the parking lot, pulling to my driveway, pull along the shoreline of the, the project, uh, along the roadway there, and they, they get out of their vehicles and they'll walk across my property. They'll walk, I've had them on my decks, I've had them on my docks. Um, so people will naturally, it's a natural point for people to want to stop to take a look at the lake when they're traveling on this, uh, major corridor. And, uh, so I end up with this trespassing issue, and it's always concerned me whether they're coming from my driveway to get over to the project area or from the project area over onto my property. During the summertime is, you know, the water, the water, the boats out there, I mean, 40 years ago, it was nice and peaceful. Today, I didn't, you go up there during the summer, that, um, I, I sent a video, I think, of the waves crashing over, over the, the seawall there, and that was done on Saturday the 18th in, uh, 2018, and that's not, that wasn't a major weekend. It was not a holiday weekend. And those waves from the boats that they have out up there on the lake where people are wave boarding, and they come crashing through there. I can barely stand on my docks. I mean, I'm, I'm afraid of falling off, but my docks, I don't like being out on that water on my docks during the summer. So there's a lot of wave action, and I have no idea what it's going to be like when you put a, a fishing pier there or launching your boats there, how safe it actually is going to be. Um, at night, like, you know, they, they're going to lock it up at night. I, I still see people, once they know there's a restroom there, they'll be coming from the water side to try to get access to that restroom if they know there's one there. There's no public restrooms five miles down the road in either direction. People want to stop. I mean, they've stopped and asked if they use my bathrooms. Uh, so I see that as being a major inconvenience, especially putting it right next to my, my home. I just, within 10 feet of my, my home? I mean, how would you, if you were a homeowner, want to have somebody putting a bathroom right next to your home? All I see is devaluing my, my property, making, making it practically worthless by doing that. Uh, they, they characterize in the project that it was a, uh, a vacation rental. I think that's a mischaracterization. First of all, I'm no, I no longer have it listed as a vacation rental. Secondly, this year is the last year that I, that I did it, and I had eight, eight people rent it from me 37 days, so it's anywhere from three to, three to seven days. And, uh, uh, so I wouldn't consider that a, I mean, it's a residence. It was where my mother lived and died. It was where my younger brother lived and died, and my family and my relatives loved coming up there, and I hope to, to move up there as well and, and continue to enjoy the lake. Um, I have only, uh, two recommend, two recommendations, uh, which I believe you've already covered. One was that the bathroom, I just don't like the idea of having a bathroom right next, next to my place. If they could move that further down. And the other recommendation is, uh, I've already forgot my train of thought here, but I have it. Oh, is to build an eight-foot, uh, barrier between my property and the project to give me some privacy, and, uh, the project doesn't call for an eight-foot barrier.
Your, your, sorry, your time's up. Thank you.
But I have a question. Uh, the, the barrier, um, what would you prefer as, as the type of barrier between the properties?
An eight-foot concrete wall, so I have a sound barrier, one, and two, they, they can't climb over there during the day or at night to try to get access to the bathrooms, which will be locked obviously after at night, but they'll still try to get in there, I'm sure.
And would it help you, um, significantly if, if the bathroom were moved 10 feet away from the property line?
Absolutely. Preferably, I would have liked to have them put it over where they're planning to put the office building.
Sure. And currently, you don't live full-time there, but you, you use it regularly?
Yeah, it used to be my parents', and, uh, there's nothing to say that my brother, my brother and I are looking, we live in the Bay Area, but we're looking at the idea of possibly moving up here only because it's, the Bay Area's getting so congestive, and we're both retired now.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you.
My name is Scott Frazier. I am the principal owner of 7540 Obern's Ferry Road and have been so since 2011. I, uh, am intimately familiar with the subject parcel, having had it in litigation from 2014 and it just recently settling. Um, I have, probably have more studies and familiarity with this parcel than probably anybody in this room. Everything from trespass videos to the integrity of the soil to the easements, which I'd like to address that I, Mr. Murphy has incorrect. I'm not necessarily against, uh, what they're trying to propose here, but I am adamantly against the scope and the density of what they're doing. I myself considered buying this parcel a couple of times and proposed less dense issues. Planning actually told me not to waste my time submitting an application, that the line of sight was too dangerous for anything significant on that parcel, and in addition, that one giant berm of land would have to be removed for anyone to do any ingress and egress out of that property. These were all things I was told, and now it seems like there's a willingness or an interest to have something with larger density. Uh, in my capacity as a sports and entertainment attorney, I have designed waterfront facilities mostly used for competition and recreation use in Asia, the Middle East, and temporary facilities in other countries and all over the United States. I'm familiar with the dangers that are, that can happen, and I'm very familiar with Lake Tullock. Uh, one of the biggest concerns with this lake, I'm sorry, with this, uh, parcel, the waves and the wakes are so significant now from a modern-day wakeboard and wake surfboat, they will pummel anyone that is trying to get into the water there. It will be impossible to launch or to get into a kayak or any type of rooftop, uh, watercraft at that point on any given day where there is boating on the lake, period. People will get seriously injured, bashed up against the wall. Weekly, probably daily, there are people that walk down and use it as a day-use facility now. There have been people that have camped there. There have been recent fires there. I do have footage and photos of some of these things that I can share, uh, at a later time. All this happens. I have seen swimmers get, uh, pretty well beat up trying to climb down that wall. They swim over and, uh, picnic on a floating platform that is out there right now, and all of this gives you a good indication of what's going to happen once this is now advertised as a place that you can come and visit. TRIDAM hasn't reached out to any of us. Not one single one of us ever received a call from TRIDAM or an invitation to participate in this, to share what we know, or to, uh, provide any harmonious designs of our own that could possibly be integrated. None of us. So it's been disappointing. I myself have never even been sent a copy of this plan. It was not until yesterday that someone showed me how I could click on it online. So I do have a packet for you, and I'm sorry that you're getting it, uh, this day, but I couldn't even review these materials until yesterday. All right? So, uh, I guess my big beef that I want to talk about is with the easements. I don't, uh, Mr. Murphy's letter that he has included in the, uh, the documents here states that he only reviewed one quitclaim deed. All right? That's not an adequate amount to determine the easements. I've had three independent surveyors find this easement in 2014. I submitted it to this county as part of installing new water and sewer lines. You accepted it. I'm going to give you a copy of it. It does indeed run through the parcel. So do my new water and sewer alliance. So I'll give this to you now, and if you have any questions, you can let me know. Thank you.
On the easement issue, what is the easement for?
Water, sewer, and access.
Okay, now, as to the water and sewer, what about this proposed project would interfere with that easement?
There are two. First is the fill that in here was an illegally done job that has never been engineered. It's full of, uh, silt, uh, it's porous, and full of broken-up concrete from a destroyed development project in another location that was placed in there haphazardly, uh, quickly so that it could not be stopped. All right? The lateral support from the lower section, I'm worried, will interfere with, will degrade the integrity of my water and sewer line that exists right now. Also, there's the access issue. They're looking at blocking some of the access. That access should be important in case any of the other parcels, well, I'm, first, there's a right to use it, it's an pertinent easement, but second, it's possible that there might be common ownership again between some of these parcels, and access would be very beneficial. That's actually why this started. When Jack Kogan developed all these parcels, he reserved for himself and the pertinent for 7540 Obern's Ferry Road an access easement to go all through these parcels, and it still exists today. So my main concern is lateral support, or heavy density could damage my water and sewer line that are in there now.
Thank you.
My name is Jack Cox. I am currently the president of the Copper Cove Association, the largest HOA in Calaveras County. I served as president also in the late 1990s. Uh, I'm not speaking for the association, but these are my opinions. I also, uh, was the founder of the Lake Tullock Alliance, working with the homeowners associations throughout the lake and have a great deal of experience, probably 25 years close to. Working with the lake was interesting. Susan was mentioning the Corps of Engineers. We were the ones that went to the Corps in, in, uh, in 1996 and appealed them to act because this county would do nothing to deal with the issues on Lake Tullock, the, uh, basically the destruction of Lake Tullock by expanding more and more land into the lake. We were very concerned about what, about the environmental issues, public use, et cetera. One of the major purposes of the, of the FERC license is to protect the environment and number two, to enhance public recreation. So I want to deal with these issues today. Uh, currently, a large portion of residents, and you've got to think about who's going to use this, a large portion of the residents of Copperopolis area already have access to Lake Tullock. Our association has more than 2,300 lots. We operate the only lake park on the north shore. We have multiple docks, two launch ramps, and picnic and swimming areas, and a lot more. The four other major associations also provide lake access to their members. There are about two or three other housing projects, including Saddle Creek, now Copper Valley, that don't. Uh, presently, the only available access is to Drifters. Um, the South Shore Marina does serve as a excellent source for people to be able to get access to the lake, so there is access. The problem of limited access was created years ago by land use planning on Lake Tullock. Now, the vast majority of land is private property. As you noted in your general plan discussion, the better alternative long-term is to direct lake access to the nearby shores of Lake, of, of Maloney's, which is more than 40 times larger than Lake Tullock. The completion of an existing road to, to New Maloney's is the real long-term answer to the problem, not a postage-stamped-sized park. The reality is, population is growing in the San Joaquin Valley. It's growing in the Bay Area. Demand on this lake is going to be huge. They just talked about some of it. To give you a statistic, years ago, they counted the number of boats on Lake Tullock at one time. It was 189 boats, and we can safely have 116 boats. And as the fellow mentioned previously, the technology of these boats now, the wave action is absolutely unbelievable. So we've got a big problem, and this postage stamp lot is not going to solve it, but I do want to commend TRIDAM over the years for its work to protect the environment when this county absolutely did nothing. Uh, our concern about this proposal is traffic, or mine is traffic vandalism and security. Our association's park has been the victim of vandalism for decades. In 1997, when I was president, we built new restrooms, and within, within days, they were totally destroyed, and they were locked, uh, restrooms in a block, uh, cement block room. We've installed strong security fencing, multiple security cameras, and during the high summer months, full-time staff are on-site even in the evening hours. We require key card access to it so we know exactly who uses it. While our lake park is about four miles off a major highway, this facility is right on a highway that carries about 5,000 cars a day. Last year, Calaveras and Tuolumne County placed barricades on each side of, of the lake, of, of, uh, the Lake Tullock Bridge on Obern's Ferry Road to stop what was just an unbelievable number of people and vandalism, et cetera, right along the shoreline. And that vandalism was on private property, and the number of people parking up and down the highways was incredible. Now, that has actually ended by the action by Tuolumne and Calaveras County. The amount of garbage that's been there has been, has been incredible. The day, this day-use facility will become a Mecca for these same people who created the mess by the bridge and now next door to private residents in a substance abuse center. A dozen parking places will not handle the demand, and, uh, it's, it's just isn't going to work. I do not believe this product, project should be considered, should be approved without a formal review of security and traffic. Uh, the garbage pickup daily is, and not having any cans, we know, we've seen the amount of garbage just dropped off on the shoreline of Lake Tullock. I can assure you from our experience in security issues, it's much, it's at a much more isolated park. Consideration of these issues is essential. Without it, the county would be approving a huge ongoing headache for the community and law enforcement. However, we do need public access. We do need more public access, and the demand is going to continue to grow. So long-term, this isn't the answer. I don't see, I think the land use decisions restrict basically making all land at Lake Tullock private except for a few parcels. The long-term answer is opening to Maloney's and supervise, Congressman McClintock's willing to work on it. If this board of supervisors and the planning commission work together, we could really solve the long-term access problem for the public. Thank you.
Now, just one question.
Yes, sir.
All these various homeowners' associations have their lakefront access, but what other public access is there?
Drifters Marina has a launch ramp, okay, which people can launch privately, uh, boats or whatever on, on the lake. Uh, South Shore has a wonderful facility, great big facility, the gentleman used to run it right here today, today, and that provides great lake access for the public. I mean, it's huge, and it has the whole, the whole south end of the lake. Uh, this little, this little thing is just not going to cut it. And I think maybe what they ought to do is turn that little section into a vista point where people could drive in, see, because I think, I see people stopping all the time trying to take pictures, and it's dangerous, the road, of, of all those curves coming down from Poker Flat, et cetera. But it is not going to solve the long-term demand of public use. I think South Shore can do so much, and I'm sure we can get some statistics on that, but really, uh, the demand here, we've done some studies, and we know, we know what, what long-term, it's big, big time.
So basically, the need is there for public access, but this is too small to, that'll create more problems than it will solve? Is that what you're, summary?
I think you have to address the reality. We know from our security problems that we've had at, uh, at the Kiva Lake, Lakefront Center, which is much bigger, they're serious. You are going to have to have security there. You're going to have to have, uh, much more than just a little fence. Ain't going to cut it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Madeline, do you have anything you'd like to add to this discussion?
I just wanted to mention, um, you know, the, the issue of traffic has been brought up a number of times, people requesting a study. A study isn't a requirement for the PD. In addition, the Lakes Treatment Center, just a few parcels over, was also permitted use. There was no traffic study required for that either. Just wanted to put my two cents in there about that.
Um, but as far as But as far as traffic goes, I can see where there can be a problem. Particularly if you have cars, underpowered cars pulling a trailer with a boat up out of this area and trying to zip across and get to the far lane and this sort of thing. And arriving, I think the suggestion was made that there should be a left-turn pocket and a right-turn lane. Is that possible? Is that something that can be required as part of this project?
Well, I wouldn't be able to make that determination. That would be something done in a traffic study, which Public Works did not discuss the need for. Peter, maybe you can chime in a little bit about...
So, condition 2-1 from Public Works requires an encroachment permit, which requires that they meet the standards for an encroachment. That includes degrade at the apron and meeting adequate site distance.
But that has nothing to do with the traffic on the road? I mean, how do you get off the road and how you get back on the road?
Well, that is, look, Public Works requirements, the standards for an encroachment is based on the speed of the road, the site distance, the amount of traffic. And so, the standards that that encroachment is constructed to has to take into consideration those factors.
Does the diagram we have of the property, is that consistent with the encroachment? Because it looks to me as if it's no wider than I would be required to do on Freco City Road.
We do not have the final... We don't have the final engineered plans. That's something that would be submitted to Public Works and engineered design. This is the site plan that looks at the, it's beyond conceptual, but it's not the final engineered plans that would need to be submitted to Public Works or the Building Department for any of the actual construction drawings.
On that subject, would an encroachment permit, could it require that turn lanes be put in on Auburn's Ferry Road at the expense of TRIDAM?
I believe that it could. I would defer to Public Works on that. But again, the actual design would be reviewed and considered by Public Works at the time that the encroachment permit is submitted. And they look more closely at, you know, the engineering for the specific site. They reviewed this proposal and essentially said, we believe it can work. We do not have any comments. Here are the conditions we recommend on the project.
So Public Works said the driveway width shall be at least 20 feet wide. The proposed 25-foot, 8-inch width on the site plan is acceptable. So not the design of the encroachment, so not the flares and the length of them, but the basic driveway.
Which is, I happen to know that for residential, they're saying it's 32 feet wide.
No, that's not, that's not the width of the driveway. The width of the driveway for residential is 10 feet.
Okay, at the width of the actual encroachment where it meets the road.
Right, that's not what they're talking about.
That's not what they're talking about.
They're talking about the width of the driveway. So we're mixing and matching pieces here. So, but Peter's right. And my understanding is theoretically, they could have any requirements they believe are necessary. I think it's not likely that they are gonna bring something up like left and right turn lanes that were not contemplated at this stage. That's just my experience.
Okay, okay, I've got a number of questions. First, I think the issue has come up, which I did not perceive as an issue going in. And that has to do with the zoning. Somebody explain to me how an office building fits into the permitted use in a C2. Park, playground, picnic area, rest area, how does the office fit in?
C2 does allow business uses, office buildings. That's the primary use of the C2 zone, the retail.
Yes.
The commercial zoning. The question would be more, how does the park, but it is listed in there?
And then on the plan development side of things, the issues that I can see are, number one, the fence between TRIDAM and Mr. Payne's property. I would think that has to be specified, exactly what it is, what material it's gonna be, how tall it's gonna be, and so forth. The second issue on the PD would be the restroom location, and depending upon the location, the setback, that hasn't been specified. It also appears that the rest, the refuse areas are supposed to be enclosed. I don't see that in the plans. So those are my issues on the PD part, but I have a lot more on the SEQA problem.
Does anybody else have questions? Madeline, before we allow the applicant to speak again.
Well, it depends on when Commissioner Wooster wants to present his SEQA.
Well, no, we can, perhaps the applicant would want to wait till I'm done. But if he wants to go now, that's fine. Okay. On the SEQA document, the geology and soils. The initial study says that there's not much potential for erosion because the soil is Group IV, soil Group IV, which is shallow and rocky. That's pages 16 to 17 of the initial study. But apparently, the fact is that this site consists primarily of fill that was placed in the 1980s. And there's not much vegetation there, except for some trees planted along the shoreline. And one of the comments, I think from Mr. Fraser, says that erosion is already a major problem and will get worse. So how does, does the fact that this is, this parcel is composed of fill, how does that affect the potential for erosion? And we'd have to assume it's non-compacted, because that's what the record seems to say. So I would like, at some point, somebody to respond to that, either TRIDAM or the staff. And I guess another question is, on the same line, if we're talking about a SEQA environmental document, do those concerns apply to a man-made area? In other words, fill, this is not a natural environment. So do we even have to worry about erosion here? I suspect that you do, but I'm not sure of that. The second area I have concern about on the SEQA document is the transportation. And one of the initial study checklist questions is, would the project substantially increase hazards due to a geometric design feature or incompatible uses? And tied into that, we have the general plan 2-22-1 that requires some analysis of the traffic impacts. And there are substantial concerns that have been raised about the traffic issue. Both the TRIDAM lawyers and Mr. Fraser. And it's been pointed out, it seems to be clear, that what we have is a straightaway in front of this parcel, and on either end of it, a twisty area. So people have to slow down on both ends. And then it appears that the speed limit's 55. So the natural inclination of people is gonna speed up when they can. Okay, now we have, we have, I think, a potential increase in the hazards here when you have vehicles trying to come out onto the Auburn's Ferry Road, or worse yet, trying to get into the facility. And with a 55 mile-hour speed limit, people with a natural inclination to take full advantage of it, if not more. It seems to me that turn lanes should probably be required. But that's not my call to make. I think that this issue, because transportation is part of the SEQA analysis, the question really is, does there have to be a more definitive SEQA analysis done because of the potential effects of this project? To me, that's the issue. I don't think that we can sit here and answer these questions. I think the question is, do they need to be studied further for SEQA purposes? And the last issue on SEQA would be the wildfire issue. Mr. Fraser's comment letter says that this project will pose a significant fire hazard. There aren't any hydrants. People will use barbecues and smoke. And the area around the project is vegetated. I'm not convinced that sufficient study's been done on that. I can see an argument that says, you got the lake on one side and Auburn's Ferry Road on the other. Where's the fire gonna go? But the concern is there. So those are my issues. And so whoever wants to respond to them, what's the other commissioners want to add to them? I listen.
I'd just point out that the letter from Downey Brand on behalf of TRIDAM says that the fill was approved by the Corps of Engineers years ago and has been in place for years. When answering the questions about fill, I'd like to, I share your concerns, Commissioner Wooster, and I'd like to hear a little enlargement on that statement.
There's pictures of 1997, reflection of the seawall.
Yeah, that would be my questions too, because a lot of things were brought up, that there was no engineering done on this. I'm assuming that before the project would go forward, if it's approved, that engineers are gonna have to look at this. Having in the past worked with Army Corps of Engineer, I worked in a lab, and then we had to get our approval to work with Army Corps of Engineers. I know they're pretty strict on how things are done. So I don't know if in the past, if they were, if it was, they just approved it after the fact, or if they were involved when the fill was put in. There's a little bit of difference there. But just being, you know, I'm assuming an engineer's gonna look at this and approve that the fill is okay and adequate for what you want to do there. But I also have a concern about the traffic. At minimum, a center turn lane or something seems to be, would be a really good idea because, like I said, traffic at 55, we know they're traveling 65 or 70. I've lived in this county long enough to know that we're supposed at 55. If I'm going 55, I've got cars going around me and flashing lights at me to get out of their way, just because I'm traveling the speed limit. So, you know, if we could address that safety issue, I think would be important.
My concern is not really with the traffic, being familiar with the area. I go through there quite a bit. It's quite curvy, and through there, that is the only stretch. But I do agree with the cars stacking up and the delay time of stopping, that could be an issue. My main concern would be the restroom and the wall for the neighbors. You know, with a zero setback or a proposed of five feet, I don't think it'd be neighborly or the best practice for this. I agree that we do need access to recreation in the area, but as far as my major concern is the restroom and safety, fire being another issue that I am concerned about. I'd like to see how that would be addressed.
Commissioner Ladish, anything you'd like to ask?
Well, I just wanted to ask the staff, as far as, it's been said that during normal, high-water summers, the beach really doesn't exist. The water's up to the rocks. Do we have any knowledge of that? Or we just have to rely on what we're getting from the...
Do not have any knowledge of that. But again, this application is for a plan development permit, so how the beach is, you know, whether the beach is available or not is not really under the purview of the commission today. This is really just the aesthetics, the design of the project. The beach is something additional. Certainly, there's gonna be a fishing pier and picnic areas. It's not a requirement for a day-use recreational area to have a beach.
Okay.
Would the applicant like to respond to any of this?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, for years, this site was used as a day-use and marina facility without a history of traffic accidents. And with regard to trailers, I'll be the first to commit, we really don't want trailers in this property, and we'll no doubt put signage up. And if you want to require your approval, that we put signage to prohibit trailers, it's really not an appropriate site for that. And turning around those facilities wouldn't be desirable for any of us. The neighboring property is a zero-watt line construction, and we had proposed a setback of a five feet. If you want to condition it to 10, we'd certainly accept that condition and make sure that it's honored. As far as the fence, a solid fence, as opposed to, you know, kind of wrought iron to, I think would be appropriate. We can certainly block it off so that residents from that side of the rental property can't come onto our property, and vice versa. I agree, they shouldn't be wandered down. I don't know how they'd wander off of that property 400 feet to the Drug and Treatment Center. And I agree that Drug and Treatment Center should not have anybody on the property that's not part of that drug and treatment operation. And I encourage the commission, planning director, or planning staff to go visit the site, because there's clearly other activities taking place on the site currently that are not related to drug and treatments. Susan may have some additional comments, particularly on the geologic aspect.
I just wanted to address some of the comments relative to the construction of the existing rock wall at the shoreline, because that was done by the prior property owner, Merle Holman. And he actually did start that work without obtaining proper permits. And so, yes, he had to go through an extensive process with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to obtain a permit. I am advised that he had to submit detailed engineering. He had to assure the Corps that it was adequate. He also, because it was placed in an area below the 510 and considered fill in a violation of the Clean Water Act, he was required as a part of that actor, after-the-fact approval, to actually do mitigation. He also had to get permission from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And as a part of ultimately getting his approvals, he actually had to do some habitat restoration and placement of riprap in the reservoir, one of the years that the water was drawn down to extraordinarily low levels for work that we do at the spill gates to fully exercise them. So that was done. Nevertheless, we, as a part of... Nevertheless, we, as a part of our project and doing our engineering studies, will make sure that that's recertified, because once we develop it, we are responsible for the safety of it. But I just wanted to give sort of the commission that background and what Merle was, Holman was required to do. He also, as Mr. Shields indicated, did operate a public marina there. He rented boats. He had a little mobile office there. It was actually a trailer parked right over against the property line bordering the Payne property. You know, and so I think that it's important to keep those in mind, not that they're germane to what we're doing. But there has been, and there was also commercial fuel sales there. People came and, and got fuel for their boats. We did boat rentals, sold, sold fuel, et cetera. And assuming that was approved by the county way back when, I know that it was ultimately approved by FERC and TRIDAM. And all of those mitigations for structural stability and placement of that wall were evaluated at that time. But as I said again, we will, we will be reevaluating it. In terms of the public safety and the public roads aspect, I can understand why the adjacent property owners have concerns, because the, you know, to, to the lake's treatment side, people that are coming from Copperopolis, there's a very steep hill there and a very, and a turn right at their point of encroachment. And then you come in and immediately have to make a hard right or a hard left to get. So I understand if people are going too fast coming down that hill, why cars would end up in their property. Same with Mr. Frazier's property. His driveway is certainly accessible from people coming from Copperopolis, but from someone coming in the opposite direction, they have to make a very difficult turn. But I just want to just stress, one of the things we did several times in the planning of the project was to meet with your county public work staff director, deputy director at the time. Not once, but I think two or three times we met out there. And the, you know, we accepted their, their evaluation and their determination and accept the condition that we were, we installed a commercial encroachment meeting county specs. And that is what we will be prepared to do. In terms of, you know, some of the other comments, doesn't seem to me that a, that a concrete wall along Mr. Payne's property might be too attractive. But certainly, we've been talking, instead of wrought iron, maybe vinyl fencing is, solid vinyl fencing might be something that he would want, and we will be amenable to doing all of those sorts of design modifications to make sure our neighbors know that we're there to enhance their properties, not detract from them.
I guess I have a question for staff and TRIDAM is, if we approve the resolution as it was presented to us today, what else will be happening? And how do, are we guaranteed that it's going to be happening before the property is open for public access? And you mentioned engineering studies.
Well, we'll be doing engineering studies to support the construction of the utility building, which is what we call it more so than an office building. It's a utility building that might house a sheriff's boat, et cetera. Those plans, we'll be submitting those plans to the county. The encroachment permit application that has the full engineering specs will also be processed through the county. You know, and I'll let staff speak to some of the issues, because some of the issues, as they're explaining, are beyond the scope of the zoning and sort of the purview. We're committing that sort of the operational, actual fence design, we're willing to do those and willing to accept the addition of a condition today that says the restroom facility shall be 10 feet from the property line. So some of those things we're willing to, to do as a matter of just offering up those requirements. In terms of fire danger, you know, again, we talked with the local fire departments, and I think possibly the reason they said no comment, no objection is because it's not going to be raw vacant land. It's going to be paved. It's going to be improved with additional vegetation, which will be low level, not overly combustible. So I think the perception or their conclusion likely is that it will be, you know, decreased fire risk than what exists there present. Certainly during the time that TRIDAM has owned it, and at least our recollection of the time that Merle Holman owned it, there were no fires there. But I also did want to speak to security. You know, most folks don't know a lot about what we do in terms of the power plants and the dams and the spillways that we operate, but we maintain a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week control room up in Strawberry. From that control room, we can see, we have cameras on our dam at Tullock, our spillway, our roads, et cetera. And it, even though it's not required, it will be our intention to have 24-hour-a-day, seven-day look that our, our operators sitting up in our control room, many, many miles away, can see. So we have the ability, should we see something, to react immediately at any time, day or night. And if it is something, we also have people that live nearby. We have operators and full-time staff that live at Tullock, by our dam, that can get there very quickly. And this is what I was discussing partly with Under Sheriff Macedo. And I think why, one of the things that having a utility, a skilled utility like TRIDAM that operates facilities that are very, you know, security is a huge concern, especially from a homeland security perspective, but this will be similar. So I wanted to at least provide those details, that we have the ability to react and respond ourselves and/or dispatch local law enforcement simultaneously, because we will have, you know, liability. Any, anyone that does anything in today's world has liability, and we recognize that. And security cameras, 24 hours a day, seven day a week monitoring helps us to limit our liability from one standpoint, but also to ensure that our facility meets the high standards of our districts and the districts we represent, and that it is an attraction, an attractive addition to the neighborhood, not a detractor. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that component, even though not required as a part of the zoning or even the PD. That's just the environment that we live in, operating dams, powerhouses, and other facilities like that.
I have a question for you before I sit down.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you consider consolidating the structures and having the public restrooms be a portion of the utility building and including some sort of dumpster or trash enclosure? Because I think it's unrealistic to think that people, that you won't need to clean up those smaller trash receptacles pretty regularly during the summer, you know, given the attractiveness of a location like this. And if you were to have an office building there, you'd be required to have a dumpster and some way to manage the trash anyway. So it seems like creating all of that structure in one location would be a good neighbor.
It is, it is something that we looked at quite frankly, and I, again, you know, Mr. Shields and I, it is more of a utility building. It was not designed or contemplated to be an office building per se. It was, we need a building there for our facilities. And the trade-off is, is that you put the restroom more visible, then we're going to encourage more people stopping day and night versus tuck it over. And if we give a 10-foot setback, a solid fence, knowing that it's going to be a restroom very similar to what might be in your home, in that it's not a compact, you know.
But the things that we can look at as part of the PD are to encourage design innovation and provide more detailed county project review than would normally be, improve the visual quality of the project. So while the proposed restroom facility is what you might expect to see in a lot of locations, it is, it doesn't have great visual quality. I think that it could be improved, given that the, the other structures in the neighborhood, okay, our houses and a rehab facility, right? So it seems like there's the potential to improve that by consolidating them and sort of eliminate one of these issues. I just, I do think that trash and security, keeping it cleaned up, is probably going to be more than a once-a-rease concern.
Well, it might be every day, as I indicated, but one of the-
You guys have the people to do it.
Exactly. We have the people and we have the resources to hire it done every day if that's what it needs to be. And one of the things that, that is, you know, we, we did evaluate, do you, do you put a dumpster? Do you not put a dumpster? And one of the things that we weren't required to submit, nor have we submitted, but it will be a part of the project, is sort of iterative signage near the picnic tables that talks about environmentally sensi, environmentally sensitive issues, why, what's important in terms of habitat at Tullock. And so there's been, there's a lot of study. I go to conferences about recreation planning across the country as a part of my work here. There's a lot of studies that show, do you put a dumpster or do you try to encourage environmental, environmentally sensitive practice? And the recent school of thought is, if you encourage people to pack it in, pack it out, you end up with a better environment than if you put a big dumpster that people just stopping by, see the gates open, they bring their neighborhood trash. So we certainly want to be allowed to start off with our concept of pack it in, pack it out, but monitor daily if needed. And, and if we do have to put in a larger dumpster, certainly we understand that the county's regulations in the PD zone require that it be completely shielded. So we would want to hide it somewhere over by that utility room as well.
Or provide operationally a way to empty the garbage cans as often as you need to.
We will. We will. We already have that as a part of our operational plan is most likely entering, entering into an agreement with a local firm that does landscaping and property cleanup to come. Certainly during the summer, it's likely to be an everyday, you know, event.
And the intention is to fence three sides? Is that the?
Correct.
Right. Not the water side, obviously.
Yeah. It may be that there's some low-level fencing we will want to do along the reservoir side, just so that people don't walk out there and inadvertently fall into the reservoir. But that would be low-level, probably three-foot wrought iron fencing. That's as attractive as possible. But certainly along the, along the Payne property line, listening to Mr. Payne's comments, one of our original thoughts is, instead of doing wrought iron, do a solid vinyl fence that's, you know, fairly low maintenance. I think we're even willing to let him pick the color, whether he'd like white, green, match his house, all of that's doable. But we certainly don't think a concrete wall is, is the vision that we would like to.
But if that's what he wants, is that all right with you?
Already what he's got on the backside of the restroom, a foot-tall concrete block wall.
Wait, well, we're proposing to, after talking with Under Sheriff Macedo, we would entertain a condition that says we plant ivy around it. That's, we've already, since, since that discussion, I've already told our folks, hey, ivy around it, the counties had good experience at their parks using ivy. I think Under Sheriff Macedo said there's just a new project opening in San Andreas, that they, they planted ivy around it. And that discourages graffiti. So we're all about that. We're, we're constantly having to paint some of our facilities that we experienced. And just to clarify for the, for the planning commission, the barriers that were installed actually on both abutments, certainly that was, that was paid for, initiated by TRIDAM and actually paid for by TRIDAM, because we, we were really sensitive to the adjacent landowners' concerns on the Twomey County side, that people were trespassing and walking and graffitiing. And so that was actually initiated and paid for by TRIDAM.
One thing you've mentioned several times is the possibility of Sheriff having a boat there. Now, would this current ramp, would that be sufficient to-
It would not ramp, it is not designed to launch their boat. It would be a utility building that they could, you know, open, get their boat. They already keep their boat at several locations, one in Poker Flat. But in the event that, like Tullock shores needed that space for some of theirs, we have the space available as well.
So the boat wouldn't be launched from this project?
No, correct. No. It would not be launched there. They'd have to go to one of the other launch ramps, one of the HOA launch ramps that they're allowed to use. But they certainly, if they didn't have the, the place they currently have, we have another option for them, because it's much easier for them to get out on Tullock if they don't have to pick up their boat in San Andreas, by the airport is where their current facility is.
Is this going to be a fee area, or is it just open to the public?
It's, we're allowed, according to our FERC, the FERC order approving this, we're allowed to charge a fee, but at this point, we're not anticipating charging a fee. So it would be a free come and go. And what studies show from similar types of facilities like this is people may come in, they'll picnic, they may use the restroom, they'll picnic, they may fish, they'll leave. There will be generally a, a turnover during, during the day. And I just, so that the commission knows, we understand that it's not in, always, these types of facilities, no matter where we would choose, may not be entirely popular. And I just want the commission to know that even before our license was issued, our 40-year license was renewed by FERC back in 2006, we had started looking at a, developing a day-use site on 14 acres owned and administered by the Bureau of Land Management back up in Black Creek. And we had actually gotten approval for that. But then some part of the lot line adjustment that was approved by the county for the creation of those 20-acre parcels eliminated the roadway access to that property. So our park then became a boat-in-only, which we still pursued, but FERC said, well, you know, and, and obviously, it's not very, it's not very effective if you can only get to it by boat. So actually, just for the commission's edification, and I'll keep it brief and stop unless you have additional questions, but after that didn't work, FERC actually required TRIDAM to go survey every piece of property on the Calaveras side of the reservoir for suitability. We had to make a complete, comprehensive filing with FERC with photos. And that was where, one of the things that FERC directed us to do was to look at the 2.7 acres that's adjacent to the public, little public access 10-foot pathway that the county has between Drifters and Calypso, site so currently is owned multi-family residential. We were required to look at that. Not only did we look at it, we bought it, we own 2.7 acres. But after developing a plan there, it became incredibly unpopular with the folks in Conner Estates. We got support from Calypso, the Drifter Marina operator, he ultimately opposed it. So then this became available again, and given its longstanding use as a marina, you have the application before you, because FERC has said, move forward with this site, move forward with this request, please, please, the public needs to have some access, even if it's small. It can be a nice, nice little small site. So that being said, thank you for your time.
Any further questions before we close the public hearing?
No.
There was a question that Commissioner Ladish asked about what the county's procedure would be for this. And first of all, before any other permits could be issued for either grading permitted construction, we would review those plans for consistency with the conditions of approval in the site plan. And as Ms. Larson pointed out, that engineering would be required for any of the permits, particularly for the larger utility building, office building, whatever it's going to be called, you know, for the foundation, you know, support of that structure. If there are, I don't know how much grading is necessary, there could be a grading permit requirement for the- requirement for the, the completion of the parking lot, but they would certainly be reviewed by the Public Works Department for the, the grading and drainage issues associated with the development of that parking lot. So at each stage of any, any permit that's issued, we would review it for conformity with the requirements of the planned development. Maybe at this point, I'd like to sort of point out what options are before the commission at this point in time. There's been some issues raised regarding the adequacy of the environmental review. If the commission found that you were less than satisfied with the analysis, you could direct the staff to go back and look at certain specific issues associated with that, redo the environmental analysis. You could add conditions at this point, based on the information before you today raised by the public or by the applicant. Or you could defer it back to staff to readdress some of these issues. So those are the options that you have.
May I add one thing regarding the location of the restroom? The second ADA space that is at the end there, the western end adjacent to the restroom, is not required. Only one ADA space is required. That space could be done away with, and that gives a lot more room, because that hatched area in front of the restroom is, is the turnaround for that ADA space. That gives a lot more room to move that structure away if there's a setback that's desired by the commission.
I could see that there would be concern about creating a narrow space behind the restroom where somebody could hide. That would be more of a concern, I think, from a security standpoint. Anything else for the applicant before we close the public hearing?
Well, I did raise one issue about the fact that this is a kind of a non-conform use and required some sort of investigation on the traffic side, but I don't know that I ever heard what that entailed. This is quite apart from CEQA, this is, which has the same issue, but-
So we reviewed this, we sent this to our Public Works Department, and they did not raise concerns regarding traffic, other than the need to have an adequate encroachment permit. We relied on that statement from them, that no further analysis was necessary and that it met the requirements and standards, or that the development could meet those requirements and standards.
I'm wondering if we should take a break?
Why don't we take a 10-minute break? Good idea, Mr. Wooster. I have to use your long apple. Commissioners, any further questions before we close the public hearing portion?
No.
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 Okay. Closing the public hearing portion, and we're ready for some discussion.
My, my thinking is that the CEQA issue is, is the main problem I have. And, excuse me, under that, it's the traffic hazards. I think there needs to be a more definitive analysis of the potential increase in traffic hazards because of this project. This, this road is narrow. You're going to have people stacking up behind each other, trying to make the turn if they don't rear-end each other. It's a fast stretch of road in between two curvy places. And I don't think it's, the analysis so far is adequate. I'm also concerned about the potential erosion hazard and the fire hazard, those three. That's my CEQA concerns, and I'm, at this point, not prepared to sign onto this resolution in the absence of a more definitive environmental study. I'm not sure what format you take, I'm not an expert in that, but I'm not satisfied with what we have. On the planned development part, I think we need to have a definition of exactly where this restroom is going to be. I like the idea of having it next to or part of the utility room, but I don't like it where it is. The fence is going to have to be specified, and I would suggest that TRIDAM get together with Mr. Payne and come up with something that's going to be suitable and acceptable to him. And if there's going to be any kind of a refuse collection area, be it just garbage cans, it's got to be fenced in accordance with the code. Those are my issues. That's my, that's my position now.
My, my main concern too is, is just the traffic, that be addressed a little better. As far as restroom and, you know, it'd be nice if it was over with the other building, but I think that having a barrier between the, the properties, even if it's a, they make decorative concrete walls, if that's what they want to do, then they're, they're not bad-looking, other than people like to graffiti them. I don't know if that would be a problem, because it's a residence right there, but the other, just, you know, I guess if they're having security cameras and things, that might help. One of my concerns, I mean, I hear, I looked at this project, I go, this looks like a nice place, I'd like to take my wife for a picnic. Then I hear that it's only going to be people hanging out there that I'm not going to be wanting to have a picnic around. That's sad that, that that always comes up, but I think security cameras would certainly help with that. And I think the sheriffs, I like the idea, if the sheriffs did want to use that as a spot to put their, their boat, their presence in that sign, would, might take care of that concern as well. But yeah, again, I think that maybe I'd be a little more comfortable if there was more of a, of a study on the traffic and, and making sure that traffic safety. Yes, if everybody traveled the roads the way they're supposed to, but that's just not been my experience in 18 years living in this county. 55 usually means 65 or higher than that. I know last night, I was trying to turn out on 12, almost got hit by somebody because they were coming down the road much faster than I anticipated they were coming. And that's just typical, so I would like to see a, a better traffic study done before I went through with this.
I concur with the traffic study. I think it can be a major issue, the safety. The other sticking point I have is the restroom. I, I do agree with Ms. Plotnick's suggestion of possibly moving the restroom over to the utility building or office space, whatever you guys are calling it. And, you know, a concrete, concrete wall, I, I don't have a problem with that. You explained that you would cover the restroom in ivory, why not cover the concrete wall in ivy? I don't have an issue, I think that's, that is a feasible, you know, kind of compromise between TRIDAMs and, and the resident there. So them are my major concerns.
I agree with everything Commissioner Wooster said, and I, I commend TRIDAM for trying to make this space work. I mean, you are the ones that are being saddled with this very restricted area, and I think your, your plans look very promising. I think that, I, I would, I would tend to go with whatever the current studies show as far as what's best, as far as a restroom separate from the building, from the other building. But I think at least a 10-foot setback for that, and a, a concrete block wall with, I mean, a setback from the neighbor's property line. And a concrete block wall with ivy on it, sounds like a good solution that I hope the, the neighbor could approve.
I have some concerns about the traffic also. However, Public Works did look at this and did not have those concerns. And I wish we had more information from them as to why. We had an idea of the traffic counts or, because it does seem like it's that straight stretch of road between two windy stretches where people are tempted to speed up and pass the guy who's been hanging them up for the last two miles. So I am concerned about that. Beyond that, I just would like to make sure that we get our description of what is included in the project accurate, and rather maybe than calling the office building an office building, we call it an office utility building, so that what, anything that fits within the C2 zoning, leave them as much flexibility as possible. I'm not going to try to tell them where the toilet rooms are best located. I think it's tempting to consolidate them, but I can see arguments the other way. I do think we should define our expectation of the enclosure without trying to design every last bit of it. So I'm not sure if we want to continue this and try to get some additional information.
It sounded like there were three votes rejecting the adequacy of the environmental document, which means that planning would have to come back with a revised document, and then I guess planning could come back with some additional recommended conditions based on what you're saying here, is that-
Yes.
Okay.
But I don't think anyone is, none of the commissioners are saying that we see a problem, a big problem with other aspects of it. It's a minor tweaking, the traffic is the major item. Commissioner Wooster also has concerns with the soils. I think that will get resolved as a part of the permitting for the, the actual development of the site, so that's not my concern right now, but-
Well, my concern is whether it ought to be addressed further in the CEQA document.
You might want to pull on what you want, you might want to pull on what you want to see addressed better in the CEQA document. We know there's three on traffic, we don't know what, if there's three on anything else.
I think there's five on traffic.
Right, three, three or more.
Yeah.
My other two were erosion, because of the fact this is fill. This is all built on fill, we're going to be built on fill. And the CEQA document simply says it's soil group four, which is shallow and rocky. Well, it's not, naturally, it might be shallow and rocky, it's not necessarily that way when it's been torn up and then stuck back down under dirt. And so I think CEQA analysis should look at that. Don't know what the answer is, that's why you want the investigation.
So my, I, I look at it from the others, I don't think it's a CEQA issue in that we're not looking at that these are soils subject to liquefaction. It's not a natural hazard, that's not what we're looking at here. We're looking at an engineering issue that should be handled as part of the design order. That, that's just the other way of getting to the same place. I don't-
Maybe that just, the document should be corrected as far as its soil description, because it shouldn't describe it-
That there is.
Yeah, that it is, it's fill, but having worked in, with engineering firms and doing soil compaction testing, that'll definitely be a part of any project that they have to look, they don't, you don't allow anybody to build anything until that's properly checked and compacted. As far as erosion against it, and I did bring, something that kind of came up is, we hear over and over that the wave action from the boats, but somebody says, we don't need another five-mile-an-hour limit on the lake. Well, but it sounds like, maybe we do, if the, if the problem with the boats is that bad, that, I don't know, that might be something to look at in that area nearby as a five- where you have recreational areas, you generally don't allow boats to go by at full speed right near them. So I don't know, maybe that's not really an issue, but-
I believe that to be on, be beyond our purview.
Yeah, might be beyond what we can do, that might be something to look at later.
That is a TRIDAM issue, and-
But as far as the engineering, the engineering will be, I'm sure will be looked at. I've never seen a project where engineers don't get involved and take care of that. So, again, understand what Commissioner Wooster's saying about, about the CEQA document describing the soil incorrectly, that it is a fill area, but I think the engineering will, will take care of that, that maybe that could be a correction made in that. But my only concern then is, again, is the traffic study.
It just keeps, I forgot to bring this up under question. Does anyone know if a seawall is required on any other portion of the lake, part of construction?
Do you want to say anything? I, I do not. Susan, can you come up and answer this question?
Just one you thought it was safe to.
She knows what kind of things get built around the lake.
A seawall, the requirement that every property owner who owns waterfront property is not, there's not an absolute requirement. They are, they are free to propose them, and it would be something that if it is below the 515-foot contour, which is the limits of TRIDAM's jurisdictional, jurisdictional authority delegated by FERC, we would have to permit. But it's not an absolute requirement. There is a raw wall though here, as we've been discussing. So, you know, it's not, not a requirement though.
As to the fill and the question of whether, what might be handled in the CEQA document, it would be nice to have a clarification as to what the, what previous approvals have been made for that fill. I don't know if that's appropriate to put in, in the CEQA document or not, but we have at least a claim that the Corps of Engineers approved this.
Well, as to this issue, one of the checklists on the CEQA initial study is, is this project located on a geologic unit or soil that is unstable, or that would become unstable as a result of the project, and potentially result in on- or off-sized landslide, lateral spreading, subsidence, liquefaction, or collapse. So that is a subject for CEQA analysis, according to this checklist. And that's why I brought it up as part of the CEQA.
I don't, I see that a little differently. I, I see it as an engineering issue, not-
It may well be both.
Because, it may be. So, do, do we have three votes for including additional analysis of the geology, the soils conditions in the CEQA analysis, or are we comfortable allowing that to be handled by the engineering design team?
CEQA.
I believe the engineering, just having worked in that industry, the engineering will, will take care of that.
I believe engineering will take, take care of it.
I'd like to see some consideration be made in the CEQA document, but I mean, I don't, not, I think the final decision will be based on the, on the engineering. So I think a, a more accurate description of, of the soils on the, on the property, and what would be on the fill, I think would be a good thing to, to have.
And something to look at with that description too, we keep calling it a fill, was it an engineered fill? There's a big difference between somebody just throwing, throwing something in there, or is there past documents, like I said, showing that it was an engineered fill?
So, so in answer, I'd, I'd say CEQA.
I think we can clarify the information in there without requiring necessarily additional analysis. analysis.
Right.
That sounds like the three members of the board of the commission. Don't feel analysis is necessary, but I think that clarifying the information is certainly...
They have the existing condition. There. Okay. Commissioner Wooster, you had some concerns about wildfire.
Yes.
They wanted it addressed in the SEQA document.
That was the third. I just think there should be more analysis now. Based on what's been presented to us.
Looking at the project with the amount of parking lot and looking at the pictures where picnic tables are, there's not vegetation there. I don't see major wildfire problems there. Like I say, you're bordering the lake on one side and bordering the highway on the other. I think we can get... And I don't know, I didn't see in the picture in the plan, were there barbecue things provided or, you know? It may be that you say no barbecuing allowed. I don't know. The plan didn't show whether or not you had barbecue pits or facility provided there, so... But I don't really see that even causing a major wildfire problem. But maybe it would be... It shouldn't be too difficult just to put a fire hydrant there somewhere, just in case, so that there is availability.
Water pressure and availability.
If the water line will provide for that.
An issue as, you know, I do... Current state of fires in our areas, fire safety is always a concern. However, with the structures going in, you know, looking at the plans or sort of plans, they got concrete pads around the... Underneath the picnic tables and that kind of thing, I think it pretty well mitigated, surrounded by either the lake and then the parking lot on the opposite side and the road. So, I have no... I think it would be no change for the SEQA.
Well, I previously said I agreed with everything that Commissioner Wooster said, and it felt good to say that. But I don't feel that we really need to add to the SEQA document on fire protection and that we're looking at the effect of this project. And currently, there are trespassers that come onto this property and probably create a much greater fire hazard than the picnic, picnicking would. So, I don't see where we do need that. Takes away all my good feelings about agreeing completely with you.
I don't believe we need the wildfire addressed in the SEQA document. I believe those were the three items that were up for discussion. So, it sounds like just the traffic and some clarification of the existing conditions. And then, in the PD permit portion, just clarifications on the description and scope of the project. With regards to the utility structure... Utility building or walls, security fencing, whatever it's going to be.
The bathroom.
So, I think it'd be appropriate this time for a vote on our motion on continuance to address these concerns over the adequacy of the environmental document, and I would recommend that be continued off calendar for us to do that.
Yes, so...
I'll mic that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody, we have three more items to discuss today, so... Commissioners, commissioners, would you like to go to lunch now?
Yes.
I think we can probably get through the next item in just a couple of minutes.
That's what I thought. You guys feel good about trying to get one more done before...
One more done.
Okay. Thank you.
Get three more done.
I lost my agenda. Okay. We are moving on to item two on the agenda, 2019-058 Agriculture Preserve in Williamson Act Contract Number 375 and zoning amendment for Leland Bradley Hall.
Okay.
Go Gina.
Barreling through. I don't even know what number this is at this point. I think we've accomplished three so far. This is number four and obviously more to come. So, as previously said, Ag Preserve Contract Number 375, for your consideration, consists of two contiguous parcels totaling 194.57 acres of land. The property is located west of State Highway 26, approximately a half mile northeast of the Paloma Road-Gillen Road intersection. The land is currently leased by David Fisher, who is grazing approximately 50 to 70 head of cattle. It's my understanding that he also owns and leases adjacent land as well. Feasibility study conducted by our Calvers County Farm Advisor, Scott Onado, or excuse me, Onetto, wrong side, Amador versus Calvers. Pronunciation has to be correct. Feasibility study confirms the land is capable of producing a gross annual income from production of greater than $12,000, which exceeds the $2,000 necessary requirement for eligibility of the preserve. Development on the property currently existing consists of one single-family residence, a residential shop building, a horse barn, a well, as well as perimeter fencing. Future improvements will include the development of cross-fencing on the property. The property is traversed by a tributary to Spring Creek, providing seasonal water source to the cattle operation. In addition, there is a large reservoir located on the property, also as a water source to the livestock operation. Currently, the general plan designate, land use designation identifies this land as natural resource land, agricultural preserve with a high capability to sustain agricultural operations. The general plan update has designated this property as resource production, which is the identifier of lands primarily used for agricultural timber production as well as mineral resource production. And the purpose of that, those designations is for maintaining lands, the viability and economic productivity of those lands. Parcels located within the designated California Red-legged Frog Critical Habitat area. In addition, CAL FIRE has designated this property as an area of moderate to high fire hazard concern. In conjunction with the Ag Preserve contract, as you know, we have to zone all the properties accordingly, which is zoning is agricultural preserve. That signifies that the land is restricted by the agriculture preserve pursuant to the Williamson Act. Again, the two parcels meet the minimum requirement for the preserve, which is 100 acres, being that the property is just shy of 200 acres total. In conclusion, the land currently meets all the requirements for eligibility for the agriculture preserve. There is adequate onsite water supply for the livestock operation. Both the current general plan and the general plan update goals and policies both encourage the preservation of agricultural land and maintaining the land in the agriculture preserve will reduce residential development and ensure contiguous, or I should say, continuous operation of the livestock operation, which will reduce fire fuels and ultimately reduce the fire hazard on the property. Maintaining open space is beneficial for the preservation of wildlife habitat. And finally, your Ag Advisory Committee and your Agriculture Commissioner considered this application, and they are making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to accept and adopt the contract. This project is exempt from SEQA, and a notice of exemption has been prepared for filing. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
The staff report refers to a minimum 50-100 acre standard requirement.
Yeah, you want some explanation?
Yes.
Oddly enough, the zoning itself requires a minimum 50-acre parcel size, but the Ag Preserve, the Williamson Act calls out 100 acres to be eligible for the preserve. So, you can actually have multiple parcels, multiple contiguous parcels under the same ownership totaling 100 acres in order to qualify. So, you can have actually substandard-sized parcels if needed, as long as they total 100 acres. But in order to be in the Ag Preserve, for some reason, our zoning minimum parcel size requirement is 50 acres. Now, there are unique circumstances that we can allow for agriculture preserves less than 100 acres. And generally, you'll find that those were typically vineyards and orchards that obviously you wouldn't need to plant 100 acres of walnuts in order to qualify. We could make unique findings under those circumstances for a parcel less than 100 acres. But that's not the...
So, with 100 acres, is it fair to say that that applies to rangeland?
Absolutely.
So, if I had an orchard, I could be 60?
You could.
Okay. When we get to the resolution, we may want to clarify that.
Okay.
That was a very well-done explanation. You were prepared. Does anybody else have any further questions for Gina?
No.
Is the project applicant here, and is there anything you would like to add? Nope. Okay. Kelly, let's hear your comments on the resolution, perhaps.
Well, just to... On page one... Page one, the third whereas clause, where it says, "The establishment of agricultural preserves are exempt from SEQA," should be, is exempt.
Thank you.
And then, consistent with the answer to my question on page two of three, where it's speaking under paragraph two, evidence, middle of that paragraph, if you don't believe the parcels meet the minimum parcel size requirement of 50 acres in the AP Zone District as well as the 100-acre minimum for the Williamson Act, I would put the word rangeland after 100 acres.
Okay.
Can I say it?
Is... Oh, do you want to say something first before we...
On page one of the resolution, the last whereas clause, I just need to correct the date to the day's date.
Oh, I've already done that. Sorry, we didn't want to recopy all the packets, but thank you.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none. Oh, would you like to speak?
We are on the agenda as number three, and it looks like we've been skipped and we've been...
We're only on number two.
I understand your confusion. Somebody said forward or...
I'm sorry.
Item number two, I'm sorry. So, no public comment will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Any further discussion with commissioners?
Not for me.
Do you like to give us our recommendation?
Staff recommends a planning commission pass a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-028, recommending the Board of Supervisors approve application 2019-058, establishing agriculture preserve number 375, and to adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of assessor parcel numbers 040-001-012 and 016-004-020 from general agriculture to agriculture preserve based on the findings included herein as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Are you William and Judith Miller?
Yes.
I hate to give you the bad news, but we're going to hear this after lunch. Would you guys, would you guys like to go ahead and...
Let's start with no...
See if we can hear it.
We could start it and see if it's...
Peter, are you... Yeah, I mean, are you going to handle this?
No, Scott is here for that.
Oh, there you go. We'll go ahead and get started on it. We'll see how it goes. So, item three, 2019-065, appeal of 2019-054 variance for William and Judith Miller.
So, the staff will be making a presentation. There will be questions from the commission, and then it'll be your opportunity to present the item.
Okay, this is project 2019-065, appeal of the denial of variance application 2019-054 for William and Judith Miller. The variance request was to reduce the northwest side setback of the parcel from seven and a half feet to one foot to accommodate a tram for handicap access to the home. The Millers' application was denied for failure to meet the required findings. The proposed structure was a funicular tram utilizing an open-air passenger car along a 124-foot track between one and 11 feet above grade with four lanes. And because I don't like saying the word funicular, I just say tram the whole time. The subject property is located at 4931 Lake Shore Drive in Copperopolis. The property is on the shoreline of Lake Pellic. As for environmental review on the project, the project is categorically exempt from SEQA, which exempts all variances for setbacks. As far as background's concerned for the project, in the summer of 2018, the Millers came to the planning department to inquire about permitting a tram alongside their residence. They were notified at that time that their home was built up to the setback and that any built structure alongside the home would require their approval of a variance. Staff explained that needed findings to approve a variance found in county code are difficult to meet and most likely not be possible for an exterior tram. In September of 2018, the Millers contacted the planning director, set up and set up a meeting to further discuss their project. At that meeting, the director again reiterated the unlikely of making the findings necessary to approve the variance. necessary to approve the variance. The Millers made multiple trips to the planning department over the next several months, never receiving information indicating that a variance would or could be approved. The Millers applied for a variance this past June and were denied for the ability to meet the required four findings. The Millers have appealed this decision and have submitted the reasons why they feel the project meets the findings and should therefore be approved. The required findings to approve a variance are listed in Calaveras County Code, Section We'll be going over them one by one, so I'm not going to be reading them here, but the initial paragraph of the section does, why is this? Okay, I don't know why it's not showing up while on this slide. Great. Must be because we're in different windows on the. All right.
Yeah.
So the slides might be a little garbled as far as where it's concerned, we'll see. The, okay, here, where are we at? The section for the findings begins with, "No variance shall be approved or conditionally approved unless all of the following findings are substantiated." So all four findings must be met. For each of these four findings, we'll be going over the Millers' reasons on the original application as to why they are met, the reasons the project was denied, and the Millers' explanation in their appeal letter, and finishing with staff's response to their appeal letter. For the first finding, the finding state is that exceptional or extraordinary circumstances apply to the property which do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity and result from lot size or shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the owners of the property have no control. The original application states that the lot is very steep, requiring the house to be built to multiple levels. The lots in Copper Cove subdivision vary in size and shape because of the topography. Unlike the subject property, most lots in the area have large level areas for building pads, and now because of AIDS, due to this medical condition, and to provide wheelchair access for friends, mechanical access is needed. The lot, or the application was denied because it was found that steep topography is not unique in the Lake Tullock area and specifically on Lake Shore Drive. The parcel in question is roughly the same dimensions as the surrounding parcels. Numerous residences on Lake Shore Drive and the surrounding area have been constructed in a similar manner. In their appeal letter, the Millers state that their property is not like other properties in the area, that other lots have flat areas that allow for homes with fewer levels, and that their lot is too steep to provide proper access, and as well that the tram will be shared with the neighboring property. Our response to this is that, first off, the assertion that the use of the tram will be offered to neighboring property owners has no bearing on any required finding. The parcel in question has similar dimensions as others in the area, being the same width as many parcels on Lake Shore Drive, and that hillside construction is common in the area with many homes being built on steep lots in a similar manner to the Millers'. Here is a map showing the lots of the Copper Cove subdivision with the Millers' parcel highlighted in red. As you can see, the lot sizes are fairly uniform, especially in the area directly surrounding the Millers' property. The blue home in this picture is the Millers'. As these next several pictures show, multi-level construction on hillsides is quite common Moving on to the next finding, that finding states, "The variance is necessary for the preservation of a property right of the proponents substantially the same as owners of other property in the same zone of vicinity possess." On their original application, the Millers wrote that this variance is necessary to preserve the ability of the owners and the elderly and handicapped friends to access their home. The reason this application was denied on this finding is found that the ability to access the dwelling is essential to the right of having a single-family dwelling. However, having an exterior tram for that purpose is not in itself a property right. Although the preferable option of the homeowner is to have an exterior tram, numerous interior solutions exist for residential multi-level handicap access that would not require a reduction to the setback. In their appeal letter, the Millers state that interior solutions are not feasible. Staff's response to this is that the Millers have provided no evidence that an exterior tram is the only solution available, aside from their assertion that it is so. No other dwellings on the Lake Tullock area are known to have trams. Unless provided evidence to the contrary, it's not improbable to assume that there are other methods of access available. Moving on to the third finding, and this one is, "The variance would not be materially detrimental to the purpose of this title or to property in the same zone of vicinity in which the property is located or otherwise conflict with the objectives of any county plan, ordinance, or policy." On the original application, the Millers state that this project will be attractive, it will improve their property value as well as the value of neighboring properties, it will not conflict with any county plans, ordinances, or policies, and the county and any other entity will have free access on the ground beneath tram. The reason this was denied on this finding is that the owners of the unapproved adjacent property next to the proposed tram and other property owners in the vicinity have voiced their objection to the project citing aesthetics, noise, and separation between structures as their primary concerns. Calaveras County Code, Section 17.26.070G1E, requires 10 feet of separation between structures. Allowing this variance will effectively increase the adjacent parcel's side setbacks to nine feet unless a variance is also requested by that property owner. In their appeal letter, the Millers state that the owners of the neighboring property are concerned mainly with resale value. This project will enhance the value of the neighboring property as it will be shared. The objections of other owners who do not reside in immediate vicinity of the project don't make sense as the tram will not be noisy and will barely be visible. They assert that the tram is not a building and is not on the ground, and will not negatively affect any fire access between buildings, and that numerous homes in the area have air conditioning units in their setbacks. This project will be just as unobtrusive as those. Staff's response to these assertions, first off, the location of air conditioners in other properties, or any similar pertinent devices, has no bearing on whether or not the proposed tram is subject to the 10-foot separation requirement. The appeal letter infers that this requirement doesn't apply to the tram. Calaveras County Code, Section 17.26.070G1E, it requires 10 feet of separation between buildings. Now, county code further defines a building as a structure, and structure is defined as anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires attachment to the ground or attachment to something located on the ground. For the purposes of the zoning code, the term "structure" includes buildings but does not include symbols. The proposed tram will be constructed and attached to the ground as well as the house. As such, the tram is viewed as a building for the purposes of Section 17.26.070G1E, requiring any structure constructed on the adjacent lot to have a minimum of 10 feet of separation from it. To better illustrate the impact of the setback requirement on the adjacent lot, let's look at the submitted project plans. I have darkened the outlines of the house and the garage as well as the property line to better illustrate where those are. Here is the current setback at seven and a half feet, and the setback of the adjacent parcel also at seven and a half feet. The variance proposes to move the setback to one foot to accommodate the tram. To maintain 10 feet of separation, the setback on the adjacent lot will no longer be seven and a half feet, but nine feet. Now, one and a half feet does not seem like much. However, in their application, the Millers state that the local terrain required them to use the full width of their lot in order to properly construct their home. The adjacent lot is the exact same width as the Millers', which is 70 feet. The adjacent property owner has stated that the impact is concerning and unacceptable. Planning staff feels that a finding cannot be made stating that reducing the available width to construct a home on the adjacent lot will not be materially detrimental to that property. As for the final finding, it states, "The variance requested is the minimum variance which would alleviate the hardship." On the original application, the Millers state, "Because the design of our house, this is the only space that would accommodate a tram for handicapped access to the many levels of our home." They were denied because planning staff found that constructing an exterior open air tram wholly within the setback is not the least impactful option available. In their appeal letter, the Millers state that no interior options exist that would give us complete access to every floor of our home and make access to our patio and dock as explained in B above. Our response to this is that they have provided no evidence that an exterior tram is the only solution available. This variance will not be the minimum necessary if the solution utilizing the existing residence is pursued. To summarize, for the variance to be approved, all four findings must be substantiated. The variance request was denied due to the inability of the project to meet any of the required findings. Staff feels that the arguments set forth by the appellant do not adequately refute the reasons for the denial, nor did they substantiate these required four findings. For these reasons, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2019-059 to deny 2019-065 appeal and uphold the Planning Director's denial of the project.
Did the commissioners have any questions for Scott?
Yes, this proposed tram is on the north side.
Correct.
Of the lot. And that's next to the undeveloped parcel?
Correct.
And that's the one that's owned by Mr. Pesco Solidito? Okay. The appeal letter says that this tram will not sit on the ground, and firefighters and equipment would still have access to the full space. The plans, which are Attachment 5, to the staff report, seem to show that the tram would sit on foundations, a dozen or so of them, supported by posts. So in your judgment, is the appeal letter incorrect as to this statement about access for firefighters and equipment?
I'm sure the Millers will further clarify this, but I believe that what they meant is because it's on piers, you can still have access underneath the structure, but yes, it will be attached to the ground.
Well, you may be able to walk under it.
You might be able to walk under it, but as far as having access for equipment and things of that nature, I don't believe that that would be a reasonable thing to do. See how?
Okay, that's my only question.
Any further questions for Scott before we ask the applicant to speak?
Can you go back to the slide where you highlighted the setbacks in the red and blue, I believe it was? Now, on the, the house portion of it, is that just a patio on the exterior where it's highlighted?
That's the exterior deck. So if you look at the, it'll take a lot to get back there, hold on. If you look at the picture of the property, I think you can see the deck. Let's see. Let's see if you can see it there. You can sort of see the deck here behind the trees, so this is the deck, and then it kind of goes out on the side here, you see more stairs going down. I think we have a side view of the property here, there it is. So there's the deck there.
Well, then the deck itself is on the seven and a half feet, right?
The deck itself is within the, within the setback. The setback goes right up to the edge of the deck. Or so, within, within the allowed area of the parcel, I should say.
How wide is the deck?
That, I don't know, I have not measured it, I was just going off of what was shown on the project plans.
Do we know if they, if they got rid of the deck, they could put the tram where the deck is and not encroach on the setback?
That, I don't know, and that was not what was proposed, so it wasn't pursued.
You can kind of see here that it, it appears to be crossing under, or it would fit right there underneath it. I don't know how accurate that is.
Yeah. And it looks as though the way that the tram's designed, you kind of need the deck as a landing, but I'm not a designer and I'm not an architect, so I can't really talk too much on that.
Any further questions for Scott? Would the applicants like to speak to this item?
Hi, I'd like to introduce us, we're Bill and Judy Miller. And we've had this project in our plans since we built the house, and we had no idea how difficult it was going to be. And we've spent a lot of money, over $60,000 already, because of all the engineering the county required, but we wanted to do everything legally and within the permit. We can't believe what we've gone through. We're not super wealthy people. If we don't get this plan approved, we won't be able to have anything for handicapped access because we can't afford to start a brand-new project of any sort. Elevator will not work on this property. We could run an elevator from the garage level to the bridge that goes to our front door, and that would only get us to the house. We have no way of putting an elevator in the house because the levels are not squarely on top of each other. And an elevator would not help us at all to get down to the dock, dock and patio. So we'd have to do something else, and we've known this all along. There's also stair lifts. We have altogether between the three flights of stairs from the garage to the bridge that enters the house, that's three flights. And you get in the house, we have two more flights because the house is three stories. And nothing would get us down to the dock and patio level if we were using chairlifts, and it would cost us a fortune anyway to put in that many stair lifts.
Four more flights.
We, four more flights, yes. We have looked into it, and we just don't see any other alternative, and besides that, at this point, we've put so much money into this that we, all we can do is keep pursuing it. If we get denied, we're going to go on to the Board of Supervisors because we have no alternative. I have a heart condition, and it doesn't keep me from going up and downstairs yet, but on hot days, it's very hard. I, I run out of breath and I keep stopping, but that's fine, I can use the exercise. But we have a handicapped neighbor on the other side of us who's in a wheelchair, and we have promised him that if we get the tram in, we're going to run a path on the kitchen level, which is the first deck you see down there. We're going to run a path from the tram to his property line, and that lines up with his front door.
Can I interrupt you? I want you to make the best use of your time. You need to respond to the four items.
Okay.
And show us how your project could be interpreted.
One of the things she said was that that had no bearing. Our needing handicapped access had no bearing on their requirements, and our neighbor wanting to use our tram has no bearing. And I think he was saying that because he thought there were alternatives, and we're just saying, we have investigated, there are no alternatives, and at this point, we can't afford to start all over again anyway. We have spent a lot of money just for the engineering that the county required. And every time we appeal, it costs us money. They made us get a new, a new title, even though we've owned the property for 25 years. The title company was surprised, but we did. The title company was surprised, but we did it. They made us get a geological survey.
I'm going to interrupt you again. There are four findings that we have to be able to make, all four of them, and we've been through them, that the property is exceptional or extraordinary in its configuration and different than the neighbors.
May I have a separate?
Yes.
Go ahead. He wants to read the findings. That's what she wants.
No, I don't. I want, I want you to make the best use possible of your time to explain your project.
Okay.
And those four findings are the only things that are pertinent legally for us to make a decision.
Right. Okay.
I think the key finding is finding number C or three, and that caused almost all of our problems. I think our staff person here has made a logic error accidentally by, he's reading the, he's written to me the Calaveras County Code 17.26070G, saying it requires 10 feet separation between buildings. Then 1706380 defines a building as a structure, and he then decides a structure should be interpreted as a building. That's a logic error. Just because a building is a structure does not mean all structures are buildings. For instance, you could have a lamp pole, you could have a fence, you could have a wall, you could have sidewalks. Yeah, it was swimming pool. That's one he points out as an exception. All these things are structures, but they're not buildings. And so therefore, I think he's misconstrued the separation of 10 feet, and that's causing my next door neighbor to be afraid that he's going to take some of his space away from his lot. When we first wanted to apply for a variance, they suggested that instead we buy 10 feet from the neighbor and have a lot line variance, or a lot line adjustment, I'm sorry. And I thought, that wouldn't work, because that would make the neighbor's lot narrower, and it wouldn't be useful to him. So, I told him then, I didn't think that would be feasible or possible. But I do think that the 10-foot variance is for buildings, it is not for structures. Therefore, I don't think in finding C that it would require changing our neighbor's
We've also tried several times to contact the neighbor to discuss this. They absolutely refused to talk to us. We've never been able to get them to call us or email. I've given them all our contact information, but we can't contact them.
We even asked them before we started if it would be all right. You know, they never responded to us.
Our neighbors on the other side are hoping we'll get this done. Our neighbors on that side, which is an empty lot, that's been empty since we've lived there, which is 25 years, and now all of a sudden, they're worried about putting a building on it. Well, it's their property, and it's their right, but I wish they would talk to us, and they won't.
There are other things where, they're saying that our property is not unique. Almost all the lots on Lake Shore along the lake are unique, and that they are very steep, and they do require most of us to build our homes down there. As I understand it, we are the first persons in Calaveras County to apply for a tram or a furniture.
Permit.
Well, we've heard that there is one that was not done with a permit, but we don't know that for sure.
And we know, we know of one that we have seen in Tuolumne County on a Lake Shore house. So, they probably got a permit. We don't know. But ours is not really the first.
Well, but the thing is, we're the first that's coming and asking for a permit.
Yeah.
And we'd like to be, do it right. Anyhow, finding C, that would be the way, I would say that should be changed, because I think it's a mistake to say all structures are buildings, and this structure is definitely not a building.
Also, in both finding B and D, the county replied that there are alternatives to a tram.
And not suggesting?
We have researched this and can't find any alternative that would allow us to access every level that we need to access. So, the tram is the only thing that makes sense for us. That's why we started it in the first place. Okay, what about A? Do you have comments for A, A finding?
Well, that was the fact that some properties close to ours are very similar, but in the whole Copper Cove Association, there are very few similar to ours. Also, in the pictures, if you had gone slower, you would see that almost all the other homes that are built on hills are built such, they're straight up and down. So, you could put a, you could put a.
Elevator.
An elevator in most of those homes. If you notice, they are not sloping down the hill like ours is. So, ours is different.
He built our house, so he knows how it's constructed. He and a friend. And they did, they did say in their comments, I don't know if you've read that part, that they got objections from three neighbors. Well, we understand the people next door, and we know what their objection is, but the other two, we have answers to both of them. One of them just said, "Well, we're getting old too, and we know we're going to have to move when we get old, because we won't be able to go up and downstairs." That was his only comment. We built this house as the only house we've ever owned that we designed ourselves, and we only moved in six years ago.
Commissioners, do any of you have any specific questions?
I do. On the, on the finding C.
Yes.
In your appeal letter, you say that the, that the tram is not a building and will not sit on the ground. And what, what did you mean by that?
He's agreeing that it's a structure, but not a building.
It's not right on the ground, so therefore, it wouldn't be in the way.
There's air space around.
You could actually wander it.
There will be concrete posts, or concrete holding the post, wooden post.
And if you see, there's a, an engineered drawing in the plans, and it does show them picking up quite a way, because they're trying to convince the building department that it's really strong.
Show them the one in Fresno.
So, what you're saying is that the entire building's bottom does not sit on the ground?
Right, the entire tram. We have one here, like passes around.
That the same, same company built in Fresno.
No, this is another one. This is one that's just been built in Grand California, which is near Fresno, and it's very similar house to ours, in Grand.
It's a house going down to the lake, so it's a sloped property like ours.
Are there any further questions?
Did you want to tell them about?
I'm sorry, your time's up, but the commissioners may ask you questions. Are there any further questions?
Yes. Did you get the letters that people sent after we told them about this?
Letters of support.
All of our neighbors didn't get the original letter.
Up until yesterday.
The letters of support all come from people who live up there and know us. The ones that objected were all empty lots that don't live up there, and they don't know us.
Thank you. Can we pass that, return that to them? We're done looking at it. Are we ready to hear from the public on this?
Yes.
Hi, my name is David McKelson from Southern California. I have known Bill and Judy for over, actually, 52 years and nine months, because I was in my mom's belly when they met me, and their kids raised me, as well as taught me how to swim and everything else. So, I've known them through this whole endeavor, because I'm the tile contractor on their house. When Bill told me that he's building a four-story garage, I thought he was crazy. When he told me there was a bridge going over to his house, I thought he was crazy. And now this five-story house, which has 11 stories down to the lake, and I can tell you from my lakes, it's not an easy house to go up and down. Every grocery and every item has to come on down. The transition, which I've seen in my life since he's been building the house, now, Bill's just not a normal guy. He's been treasurer of this church the last 20 years, treasurer of his last church another 20-year-plus years. He dots his i's and crosses his t's. The building plans, he took into the building plan department, him and Judy, they went, back in the '70s, when they used to give you these little cameras and stuff to come on a trip, to come and check out these sales brochures, they came out to Copperopolis, and they looked at a house three doors down, which became their dream of the home they wanted to build. Off of that house, they went ahead and made their own drawings and everything, and they had an architect make this house for them. They took it to the building and safety with the initiation of putting a tram down through this house originally. That was the original plan right off the bat. Now, here I am, 52, my mother's been in and out of the hospital over the last month, convalescent home. My mother now cannot come out to this house anymore, because she has no way of getting down the stairs. My spouse, who's worked for the state for the last 19 years, had a head-on collision while on duty. She cannot come to this house, because she cannot, this is my other mom's dad. A lot of people don't have the blessing I have, but this is them. The next-door neighbor, two teachers on the next-door neighbor, they were building their house. He fell off his driveway, broke his back building his house, and if you go in his garage, it's filled with fishing gear. Only thing that guy wants to do is get down and watch his grandchildren down at the lake, and he can't do it. Bill, even in his garage right now, has all the material, and it's been there for a year to build the walkway on over to their house.
Sir.
I'm just saying. Now, noise?
I understand, and.
Oh, I still have.
I understand.
Okay, so now let's address these issues.
You'd be most helpful if you can target your comments to the issues that we have to make this issue about.
So, here we go on the four issues, okay? Number one, noise. If you guys only sat out there on a July or August morning, first thing in the morning, listened to the boats going boom, 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 which don't start at 12 and go to midnight at night, noise would not be an issue, because you know what the noise is like during the summer. And when they're the only ones who live on Lake Shore Drive, I don't think a little tram going up and down's going to make a lot of noise. I think that's superficial.
Elevations.
Yes. Now, we get to the other things. The elevation, like I said, 100, over 120 stairs, 120 stairs. That garage alone is four stories. So, you have to, sure, you can come on down with an elevator, but how are you going to, where are you going to put an elevator to go down the next five stories of that house to get down to the lake? I don't see that. And not a building? Yeah, it's not a building, just like a playground, temporary structures, and this could always be ripped out after 20 years. Maybe there's something where we could put a 30-year contingency on, the life of their life, allow this tram. And the last thing is, I guess, the issue four was the mechanical appearance of it. I think we've seen some crazy things on this lake, all over this lake, and this lake is a unique lake, you know, from one place to another, but it doesn't hurt the community. It only actually allows accessibility and family time for the residents in that area, because right now, that's, the mobility is not something which people are able to go ahead and have, and even the next-door neighbor since. You know, the next-door neighbor actually paid for a tram, started putting a tram down without permits. That contractor died, and he's still, they're in $50,000 and still can't even get to their house. So, here's someone just trying to do something righteously and legally. I'm hoping that you guys will look at their character and their long-term plans and judge it. This is, I grew up in America, this land is your land, this is my land. They bought that land, and they've done everything with their retirement, but now their funds are washed out, and they just need your guys' help more than anything. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else? We had more people coming, remember, the date got changed.
How you doing? My name is Mike Kinsley. I'm their neighbor to the north. I go down to the lake just about every day. I turned my land into basically deuse land, because it's pretty darn steep. And he says the terrain is all very similar. It's not. Okay, Bill's is the first house you could possibly walk from the top down to the lake, difficult as it may be. The people who are complaining about the aesthetics, they are between my property and Bill's property, and they cut down some trees the other day, and they wanted to use my property, because there's an easement through three properties of mine to get to theirs, and they wanted to use it, and I said, "No, you can't trespass. My neighbor won't let it." And they had to use, and these are professional tree trimmers. They had to use ropes around their butts to get down there to trim some of these trees, and they had a difficult time. The tram, which is going to be elevated, it'll be steel, and if the firemen had to get down to the lake from the side of the house, they could use that tram to hang on to, to walk down there. So, I don't think that would be an issue. Noise is not an issue. I've lived beside the Millers for a long time now. I knew them when they lived on the other side of the lake. They're very nice, quiet people. So, like I say, each one of those properties is very unique. From Bill's on down, gets a little less steep until you get to the end of our road, which is flat. You know? But Bill's is steep and probably the last house that's buildable on that side of the lake. Thank you for your time.
As I said before, my name is Jack Cox, and the president of the Copper Cove Association where this property exists. I didn't come today to talk to you about this, but I know the Millers. First of all, unfortunately, I'm sorry, sir, but you are incorrect about the difference of this lot. I'm very familiar. I walked this, this area, I've been living there for 24 years. This particular area where this particular lot is, is very different from the rest of, we have 2,300 lots in Copper Cove, and these along the lake shore, these four or five lots right there are very different from the rest of the lake lots. So, they are absolutely unique. One of the things that concerns me, too, as a matter of planning, how anybody can spend $60,000 and not really get clear understanding from the county about, about getting into this in the first place is sort of amazing. I also think we have to be concerned about senior citizens coming to our area. We're going to have more and more older people living here, and I think we need to be able to accommodate that. I also think that if you, I was just looking on my phone at what defining a structure, it's certainly not a building, and we have, at the Copper Cove Association, we would certainly be more than willing to have our architectural control board review this concept and then act on it, which we would, which we would do under, and if you would allow us to be able to work with them on that, maybe that might be one way to go. But I think that it's, it is a unique area. I think that they've been solid citizens trying to do this right, and I think that, you know, sometimes we've got to start thinking about how government works with people, and not as simply always a roadblock. And in this day and age, the American public is getting more and more concerned about that. And we have homeowner association meeting tonight on this, but I really would urge the board to basically define this as not a structure, and recognize this is a unique situation, and that you would grant them a variance. I think it would be the right thing to do. Thank you.
Scott, is there anything you'd like to add?
I think I said everything in my presentation. If you have more questions, if you have more questions for me, I'm only just going to go.
Could you read the, you say 17.06.0380 defines a building as a structure. Could you read that section?
I actually quote it in on the slide. If I can find it here. We'll get there in a second. That is the entirety of the definition right there. Building means structure.
And then the definition of structure is?
And structure is anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires attachment to the ground or attachment to something located on the ground. Now, there are some structures that are not subject to setback requirements, and those are specifically mentioned in code. There are exceptions to setback. There are exceptions to setbacks. Those include fences, landscape, landscaping, walls, driveways, pathways, those sorts of things are specifically exempted from setbacks.
So they would fit within the structure definition?
So they would be classified as a structure, but they are named as not being subject to setback provisions.
Thank you.
And the tram is not one of those exceptions?
Correct. The tram is not listed as an exception to those. Neither are our built stairways either. If you had landscaping stairs, you could call that part of landscaping, you know, if you put in like an at-grade type of thing, that might qualify as landscaping.
Actually, anything under 30 inches?
Right. But if you build stairs on the side of a house, those would be subject to setbacks.
Just as the decks are subject to the setback, even though they don't have a solid foundation. I'd also like to just make one correction to the record. There's been several references to the $60,000 or more that's been spent on engineering. That was all done before they presented this to the county. They had designed this, and the first time I'd seen it was after they had designed it. And so it's... Just wanted to make sure it was clear that this was not something that the county required. It's something they had to do in order to design this from the firm that designed the tram itself.
Mr. Miller wants to clarify that.
Anything else for Scott? Is there anything that you would like to add in response to what Peter or Scott just mentioned?
In that specific thing, Peter, $10,000 of that was required by the county. We had to get a new title before we could apply to you. We had to get a geotechnical engineer, which we had a terrible time finding one to be willing to work on the house. We had to have additional engineering work done on the plans to show the setbacks on it and things like that. Came to around $10,000. Now, the rest of it is the down payment on the tram that we had done, and we thought we would just... We were naive. We thought we could just go to the building department and ask for... Show them the plans and ask for affirmative. And they sent us to the planning department, and then Scott.
Thank you. Any further questions for the Millers?
Mr. Miller, how wide is the tram? Their proposed tram?
It's about four feet, I would say, wide, and maybe five. The car is larger... We made the car a little bit larger so that it would fit a wheelchair. So there could have been a smaller car without wheelchair access, but it's large enough to fit a wheelchair on it.
And how far does your deck stick out from your house?
In most places, it's three feet. In some places, it's four.
And Mr. Miller, you agree that there needs to be a variance in order for you to do the tram the way it is?
Yes, I do. And I thought a variance would be easy to get because when we built the house, our designer came to the county and asked for a variance in the front, and so our garage is exactly on the property land. Because even then, it was 13 feet high from the ground to the garage. But we also have some specs on the noise. It's 50 decibels is what it creates when it's running, and I have specs on air condition there around 70. And it's about like a refrigerator in your house.
How close would the proposed tram be to your deck?
Well, the deck will be built out a little bit so that we can have a place to get off of the tram and to go across the deck into the house. See, that deck has an entrance right into our... Right by our kitchen, and the lower deck has an entrance to some of our bedrooms, and then the lice stop of the tram is right at ground level at the 520-foot level.
What's the gradient on your property? What percentage would you say?
Oh, wow. I'm afraid... Let's see. It's about like this, is what I'm saying.
Steep.
It's difficult to walk on it with the dead leaves. You're slipping and sliding all over the place. And actually, one of the things, somebody said, the railings and things would actually help somebody going down there to hold on the rails as they go down.
Now, Mr. Miller, I've got another question. On the idea of elevators, I mean, I've heard said that it won't work, and I think one of the reasons is that the levels of your house are not on top of each other. They're staggered.
Right. They're staggered.
Well, I can see how one elevator wouldn't work, but could you have... Maybe this would just be too costly, but one elevator takes you up one level or two, and then another elevator that takes off in a different place takes you further up.
We really don't have any place that I could see that we could build an elevator in the house. We've already investigated an elevator from the garage down to the bridge going into the house, and they've told us it costs $80,000 to $100,000. And that was before, you know, applying for any permits or anything. And that would be the two flights... No, I'm sorry, the three flights from the garage, from the top level of the garage to our bridge going into the house. That's in effect, three stories.
And then you'd have to have a different elevator to go further down.
Right. If we could put one there, but...
Won't work now.
We have an open plan, living room, and the kitchen, and we don't have any place that we could put an elevator. If you look at the plans, you can see how the house goes down this level, this level, and this level.
What about the other side of the house? If you're on the south side?
The other side of the house, if we had to go over there, would we have to go through this, all this?
Again?
Again, to get the permission to do that. We had to get releases of the easements from PG&E, Caltell, the Water Department, and the Public Utilities. And they had to release the easements, which they did, because we don't really have any water running down that part of the lot or anything like that, and no one has anything. On the other side, we would have to have released because we do have the sewer pumped up from, you know, on Lakeshore, the sewer's in the street. You have to pump the sewer... You have to run your sewer down to the bottom of your house and then pump it up to the sewer in the street. It would be difficult, and we'd be afraid that we'd have to go through.
I just wondered, because I thought I understood that your neighbor on that side was in favor of a tram, and then I wondered why they did put between your two houses.
That wasn't the original plan.
Right. In order to get to his house, we will have to build a sidewalk over to his house, and he'll have to build a sidewalk from his house to our sidewalk. You know, but our level at the kitchen area, which is the first stop of the tram, is the same level as the front door of his house. And the last level, which is down at the bottom, we also have a sidewalk going over to his house at the very bottom level underneath, you know, in effect, underneath our house.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? We're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Who would like to start?
Well, this is an unfortunate situation, but I'm having trouble seeing how we could make the findings that we're required to make to approve this variance. It looks to me from the photographs that the steepness of this property is not unique in this vicinity. It may be that in the whole Copper Cove subdivision, properties this steep are fairly rare, but in the vicinity, it looks like this one's like the rest of them around there. And the only others, you know, there is... Finding A does allow for other circumstances over which the owners of property have no control. And when the house was built, a decision was made to build it out as far as they could. So there was control at that point. Now, if you include his property, the building itself that was built the way it was, maybe you could find that they have no control over that now, but they certainly did. And on finding B, I don't see a variance necessary to preserve a property right of the proponent substantially the same as the owner of other property in the vicinity. Finding C, we do have objections from at least one neighboring property owner to this plan, that it would be materially detrimental to him. And I don't see any way to get around the definition of a building as a structure, and a structure includes this tram. If we could get around that definitional problem, none of this would matter because it wouldn't need a variance in the first place, but I can't see a way around that. Finding D, this is a mini variance which would alleviate the hardship. It's a practical matter, maybe, maybe, given where we're at, but we have to make all of these findings, and I can't see my way clear to make all of these findings.
Commissioner Peter, you know, anything you'd like to add?
Aside from all that, just my feeling here is, sometimes you make exceptions. That's what the purpose of this is. And for me to deny somebody access to their home based on what somebody next to them doesn't want because they don't even live there, I think if they did build in the future, it's gonna be easy for them to get a one-and-a-half-foot variance as opposed to the seven-foot. I would be... I guess I'm not the lawyer, so I don't... I'm gonna lean in favor of allowing them this variance. I just have real trouble. I don't see this being an eyesore. It's not permanent. It certainly could be removed when they are no longer there. So I would be in favor of allowing them this.
I do understand their wanting a variance. Looking over this, I see it from both sides. I see it from approving this and also why they're requesting it. You know, providing a variance would be beneficial to the Millers, however, providing a variance would be detrimental to the property owners or to the vacant lot. I'm torn on this. I would actually favor the Millers on providing a variance on this.
The... There are reasons for exceptions, but this, the variance ordinance itself is the exception, and you have to... We have to follow the law. The law provides that if we're gonna make an exception, we have to satisfy all of these conditions. And particularly as far as finding C goes, I really understand why you need... In order to stay in this house, you need to have this tram. And I don't... I'm not ready to decide that you have no other alternatives because we haven't gotten all the facts on that. But I'm with finding C, this, under the ordinance, this is a building and a structure, and I am not going to go against what our law provides. It's not for me to come up with an exception to the exception. My feeling is that it would be best to, cleanest, to make our decision based on finding C without making a decision on the other findings, although I believe that Commissioner Wooster is correct that none of the findings are fully satisfied. But I see no way around finding C, and so I would deny the variance.
Well, I see no way to make any of the four findings. I think that it's very clear that we just can't make those findings. However, in looking at your site plan and looking at the diagrams that you submitted, I can see alternatives. So I'm just gonna offer you one thing that you might look at, which is... A couple of things have already been offered. You could look at the other side of your building, and I can see... I can guess what the inside design of your house and how your decks work, that that wouldn't be ideal, but you have a neighbor there who would love to partner with you, and you have more room on that side. You may have other utility issues. But even on the side of the house where you would like to put the tram, you have decks that appear to be four or five feet wide. If you were able to strip those decks back to the actual wall of your house and move that tram five feet back closer to the house, and that would require some reconfiguring of your stairs and decks, you would be able to get to every level of your house with the same tram design that you were looking at today, and you would be back here asking us for a one- or two-foot variance, which would be a much easier hill to climb. No pun really intended there, but I think there are some options. There are also options for hybrid solutions that might have a three-stop elevator in one place and a lift, and maybe a tram that is set back in closer to the house to get you all the way down to the water, which I can certainly understand. get you all the way down to the water, which I can certainly understand you want to get down to your, all the levels of your deck and dock. I don't believe that you have actually really looked at this to consider all of the potential solutions that might get you what you need to have to be able to enjoy your home. And I certainly understand the desire to make use of all of your home, a home that you've built and are attached to, but I cannot make a single one of the findings as it says today. So I think, given that, we're ready for the recommendation and about.
Okay. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2019-059, denying a 2019-065 appeal and upholding the planner's denial of 2019-054.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So, resolution carries, three, two, with Commissioners Henderson and Fiorino opposed.
So this action is final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar
So we are going to take an hour break for lunch, and we'll come back and do our one quick item in list. Somebody wants to power through it.
Yeah. How quick an item do you think? If we can get through it, if we can get through it in a half an hour, I'd just get through it.
Can you guys survive?
I can eat lunch a little later.
At least five minutes.
We'll give you five minutes.
I'm fine with.
Yeah, I'd like to get it over with, so, yeah.
That doesn't look like anything.
Because that's a logic here.
The structural definition was on there, sir. You could go read it, and it's clearly a structure.
This will be a dry power plant. This is project 2019-070, an amendment to Chapter 17 dot 44 revising the required setbacks for the business park zone. For some background, on September 10th, 2019, the Board of Supervisors instructed the Planning Department to process an amendment to revise the M4 zone setback requirements to be more consistent with other industrial zones. Chapter 17 dot 44 of the Calaveras County Code establishes the provisions of the business park zone, also known as M4. Section 17 dot 44 dot 070, titled Site Development Standards, contains the setbacks for structures. The M4 zone has separate setback requirements for perimeter and interior lot lines in business park developments. Their perimeter setback is 30 feet, which applies to all property lines on the perimeter of projects, be they front, side, or rear lot lines. The setbacks in the interior of projects vary in size. The interior side and rear setbacks are 20 feet, which is 10 feet less than the perimeter requirement, while the interior, while the interior front setbacks is 50 feet, which is 20 feet more than the perimeter setback. The M1 and M2 zones have a front setback of 30 feet or 60 feet from the center line of road, whichever is greater. In order to make the M4 interior front setback more consistent with the perimeter setback as well as the setbacks in other industrial zones, the proposed change to section 17 dot 44 dot 070 H2A is as follows: front 30 feet from the property line or 60 feet from the center line of the road, right of way, or easement, whichever distance is greater. The perimeter setback requirement will remain in place. This change to the interior front setback will allow for more flexibility for property owners to develop the M4 zone parcels and will not alter the permitted uses or the intensity or scope of use. Sequel Guidelines, Section 15 061 B3 exempts actions that can be seen with certainty that there are no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. Is, staff's assertion that the 30-foot setback currently exists in the perimeter of business parks as a buffer for development in differing zones, and that establishing the same setback for parcel lines bordering the same zone will not have a negative effect. This amendment to the setback requirement does not change permitted uses, performance standards, or the allowed density or intensity of use in the M4 zone. And as such qualifies to be exempt under this sequel provision. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution to recommend that the Board of Supervisors find that the, this proposed ordinance is exempt from SEQUA and to adopt the said ordinance.
I may be alone in my ignorance here, but I still don't understand what the difference is between an interior front setback and a perimeter front setback.
So within the M4 zoning district, the, the idea behind it is for a business park, which, which will have multiple lots in it. And so if it's consisting of, be it even one lot, then the entire thing would be an exterior boundary line. But if you have three or four or five or more lots all connected together, only those lot lines that are adjacent to other zoning districts that aren't M4 would be considered an exterior boundary.
That, wait a minute. Okay, so perimeter front setback only applies to ones that are adjacent to other properties? Or?
To other zones.
Other zones?
So if it's not zoned M4, you're on a perimeter.
Yeah, you're on a perimeter, okay, so, okay. So it's the perimeter of this zone, not the perimeter of the, of the building or the property.
Correct, correct. It's the, the project as a whole, the M4 zoning area, the perimeter of that would have a 30-foot setback.
Well, that, that helps me consider. Now, then how does taking the action that's recommended not change the allowed intensity of use in the zone? Now, you're, you're permitting a, a building to be bigger, the building is used to conduct some sort of business or, you know, industry or whatever, warehouse or whatever.
Right.
How, how does providing for a bigger building not increase the intensity of use?
Well, most projects, they're limited in scope by landscaping and parking and all these extra site development requirements that exist in the zone. And all those are allowed inside, in those setbacks, regardless of what, whether your setback be 30 feet or 50 feet. Changing the setback requirement allows more flexibility to cite your structures within that area, but your, your requirement of, of all this extensive parking and landscaping that is usually your limiting factor in how much you could build out isn't changing. And so the, the thought is that being able to move structures around on a property, having more flexibility in that is not.
But you're not really moving structures around necessarily, you're making, you're permitting structures to be larger, yeah?
I, I think what our analysis sort of came up with was that typically what's in that setback is the parking area. And so if someone were to move the building closer, you're going to have to move that parking elsewhere. If you're going to increase the size of the building, you have to increase the amount of parking. And so you're not really going to get to that point where you can increase the amount of building space without increasing the parking area, which typically goes in the setback anyway. And so with a 50-foot setback, what you're going to see is 50 feet of parking or more. And with this, you might see the building up close, but that parking's going to go somewhere else.
I've got a question. So any finding that either allowed density or intensity of use will not be changed?
That's not a specific finding that's necessary. The, the finding in SEQUA is that.
Won't have an effect on burn.
Right. It can be seen, can be seen with certainty that the proposed project here, this rezone, would not have a significant effect on the environment.
Okay, and what we're talking about here is the interior area of an M4 zone.
Right.
It's already zoned industrial. It's going to be covered with buildings or asphalt, or landscaping or something.
Right.
Why don't we just not worry about intensity and density, because those aren't required findings, and just say it won't have a significant effect on the environment because it's in the middle of an M4 zone?
That certainly makes more sense to me.
I think.
That's certainly up to the commission to make that finding if that's what you feel more comfortable with.
The density is clear. It's not going to change the density, and it's not going to change the use. Intensity depends on how you see it as, if you see it as a more intense use or if it's strictly a matter of quantity.
So why, why get into that thicket when you don't have to? Because the ultimate question is, does it have the real potential to have an impact on the environment? That's the question. And I don't see how it does.
Yeah, I think the, the reason for that statement was just simply to try to describe how we felt it did not have. And obviously Commissioner Lattes, that wasn't clear to you that was the case, and maybe we didn't do quite good enough job of explaining that. But I would agree with Commissioner Wooster that, yeah, we're talking about the interior of a business park zone, industrial zone. I think probably what we were looking at back in, whenever this was created in the 70s, thinking of these campus-like settings of business parks in Silicon Valley, we have lots of grass and landscaping. Well, that's not happened here in Calaveras County. And I think at this point in time, we probably don't want to see 50 feet of grass and landscaping due to water consumption concerns. And the reality in most cases would be that where we have had property developed in the M4 zone, which is very little actually, that space has been used by, by parking lots. So we're not going to see any.
Right.
Significant, yeah, exactly. I mean, if you, if on the, the, the resolution under the evidence of finding number two, if you just want to strike that last sentence, it's probably fine, or if you want to modify that sentence, that's probably.
It's in evidence of one, too.
I've got some language I can suggest.
Oh, good.
Okay, the last sentence, good read, amending the minimum front setback to 30 feet for all lots in the M4 zone for other than perimeter boundaries. Within the business park zone does not change any permitted uses or performance standards or otherwise have any significant effect on the environment.
Well, it does modify the performance standard since a setback is a part of the But other than that, I'm.
You may well be right about that.
I have no angst about any of this.
So it just be, does not change any permitted uses or otherwise have any significant, significant effect on the environment?
That sure makes me more comfortable.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And a similar change to number, the evidence under number two, since it has density and intensity too. Take out density and intensity, or take out intensity?
I would take both out.
I think it's fine there.
Well, it still has my question then.
No, it's, but it's different. It says the general nature, location, density, and intensity of the M4 zone remains unchanged. I think that is a true statement.
I think you're correct about that.
Yeah.
Did you get that, Scott, his modification?
I believe I did. If not, I can review the, the video and make sure it's all standard.
I am.
All right.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Let's put this one to death.
Maybe just note for the record that there's no members of the public hearing saying opening, closing the public hearing.
Opening, closing, right now. Opening the public hearing? Is there any members of the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll be closing the public comment portion of the public hearing.
All right.
And we are ready for the recommendation.
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors take the following action. Find that the proposed ordinance, or adopt a resolution as amended, sorry, recommending that the Board of Supervisors take the following action. Find that the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 17 44 is exempt from SEQUA pursuant to Section 15 061 B3 of the SEQUA Guidelines and adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 17 44 of the Calaveras County Code.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's the first? All in favor?
I second it.
Aye.
Passes by zero. I think we have some other things on our agenda. Are there any commissioner reports?
You won't believe it, but I do.
All right, I'm ready.
I'm, I'm getting a new hip next Wednesday, so I may well not be here. This is my titanium collection here. So I may not be here at the next meeting.
Thank you.
We'll make sure we'll schedule everything.
Yeah, right.
Anybody else before we hear from our leader? Do you have something to?
So I do have a few things that I'd like to just let you be aware of. You're probably all too aware that the Board adopted the cannabis ordinance on Tuesday, unless there is a referendum, significant signatures gathered to force a referendum that's going to affect in 30 days. The Board also adopted the same day the background check ordinance, as well as a fee resolution for both the application and the background check. The fees go into effect 60 days after that, so there's a provision in the ordinance, as you recall, that says we're not going to accept any applications until the fee is in place. So that means if everything moves forward, that it would become effective, or we start collecting applications on December 21st. Merry Christmas. The Board also authorized the establishment of a Department of Cannabis Control, but until staff is hired for that, it's falling on the Planning Department, we'll be updating our website as best we can to have the adopted ordinance in place and some FAQs. There's a lot of questions. We've been inundated with calls in the last couple of days about, you know, am I qualified? Or where is the list of qualified applicants I could buy the right to apply for? So I will be dealing with that in the next couple of weeks and months. On a more positive note, I got a letter from HCD yesterday that said they certified our housing element. And on Tuesday, the Board also authorized the filing of SB2 grant application. It's a non-competitive grant, so we're guaranteed as long as we meet the criteria to implement some of the housing element programs. One of those that's on the list is the consideration of the much small rural owner-built housing provisions of the building code that provides some relief from some of the more stringent requirements. And so we'll be looking at that as one of those potentials. Some of the other things that were listed that were eligible were some of the community workshops and information gathering procedures of, you know, what can we do to help reduce costs and streamline housing production in the county. The final thing I have is I am working right now on the draft findings for the EIR for the general plan. Been working with our outside counsel on that. We have a draft that just needs a little bit of touch up. The Board has tentatively scheduled December, November 12th, I believe it is, for final adoption of the general plan. And so I am, will be working diligently to get that, ready for that hearing date, and we will then have a new general plan if all goes well. and we will then have a new general plan if all goes well.
Wow.
And then we can start implementation. So, that's my report. Any questions?
No, that's exciting.
When would we be getting around to the actual zoning maps and that sort of thing?
I don't want to see that dark sky over there.
Well, the first thing I'll be doing is going back to the Board with requests for some direction of priority setting. As you recall, there are a number of implementation measures, and there are priorities from different one, and we'll let the Board decide what that is. We've already started working on the zoning map update because that's a huge task. One of the main questions will be whether or not we're going to start a comprehensive zoning ordinance revision, rewrite the whole thing, or we're going to take it in pieces. And that's, the former is a huge undertaking.
Yes.
The latter is complex because you have to make sure that you don't create inconsistencies. That's one of the problems that we have right now is, over the years, all of these amendments we've done have created inconsistencies. And sometimes we come across something where one part of the code says one thing and the other part is the exact opposite. So, but a comprehensive rewrite is a huge undertaking. I've been through it once before, and it's interesting, it's fun, but catch my breath first.
Yeah, it's where the rubber meets the road.
Yeah. And that's where the language really has to be precise. You can sort of get by with some fuzzy language in general plan policy, but when it's code, it's a whole different ballgame.
That's fantastic.
Congratulations.
We're not there yet. Congrats on me in two weeks.
I'll see it.
So hopefully on the 14th, if there's any general plan findings that need to be made, we'll be making them against the new general plan and not the old general plan. But meantime, I'm having staff prepare for both, just in case.
Are we expecting items for the next meeting, two weeks from now?
Which would be the 12th.
Yeah.
Do you remember? I'm sure we have something.
Yeah, we have some here. Okay, great. With that, we're adjourned.
Okay.
Yay, thank you everyone for today.
Now we have, we've got to go back in an hour.
I'm going to run over to.